Good evening. Good evening. The Board meeting of the Board of Education for August 13, 2019 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Before we proceed, Board members, are there any items you would like to pull from tonight's business agenda for a separate discussion and vote? If yes, we would ask that the appropriate staff remain available to respond to any questions.
I've got an item I'm not going to pull for separate vote, but just I will have an item for discussion.
Okay, we can leave that to the end. Student and public comment. Before we begin the public comment period, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to us. We value public input as it informs our work, and we will look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices or papers. One quick reminder, any oversized signs need to be in the back foyer and signs in the audience should not be held in a way that obstructs others' viewing of the meeting. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our Board office will follow up on Board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide the Board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Powell to distribute to us. Presenters, we'll have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, a red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Hough, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment this evening?
Yes, we have Libra Ford.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening, directors. My name is Libra Ford. I am the Chief Operating Officer at Self-Enhancement Incorporated and a partner with this school district. I am excited to be here. My last name is spelled F-O-R-D-E. Please don't forget the E. I'm here to say, well, thank you for the partnership. We're excited for another year of working with you guys as you consider our upcoming contract for this year. In addition to that, I want to also talk about the fact that we've been together like a relationship for a very long time, and we're excited to continue the good and continue to work towards improving the challenging areas with you. I also want to give you a quiz. K-W-I-Z. K, remember, as we get all these great new funds coming our way, that kids must be considered first. W, don't forget what is working. There are lots of things working in this school district. Fund them well. Don't leave them out. I, be innovative in all of the gaps where we're missing funding, especially with new funding coming our way. And lastly, Z, remember what Zig Ziglar has said about kids. Kids go where there is excitement, but they stay where there is love. SEI has been loving children in this school district for over 40 years. We want to continue to do that. We don't want to be forgotten, not just in the good, but also in the challenging. We're ready to fight with you as we always have. So please, remember all of those things. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your partnership. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to provide your report? Director Moore, you'll be staying after class.
Good evening, directors, and good evening to our present and listening audience. Just a few things, as we're getting close to the opening of the school year. The countdown has begun this morning. Our leadership team did a quick status check on our staffing, our facilities, our transportation preparations. We're in good shape. But what I want to focus on today are three areas. The first one is, we're coming off of one of the most important weeks for us as educational leaders, as the building and central office administrative leadership in PPS. This was, we planned a second annual professional development week for our school principals, assistant principals, and other staff, which was held at Franklin High School this past week. Four days of intensive learning and sharing of promising practices and some moments of inspiration. Our new school leaders actually did five days because they started on Monday. They got a little bit of a head start themselves to provide some orientation into our school district. But the theme this year of our Leadership Institute was stronger together. As we provide professional development and training for our school leaders, we try to be attentive to their input and feedback, which was quite positive, as last year was good, but this year, I think, was even better. And we're going to take a lot of the lessons learned in all the occasions when we come together with our school leaders this year, as well as planning into next year as we debrief. We covered some key priority areas where we know our school leaders are the key agents of change, of school improvement, particularly in the knowledge base and the skill set and the leadership moves and in the supports, all towards our march for excellence, but also racial equity, which was an important theme of our Leadership Institute. We heard it throughout the four-day experience. We also continued to deepen our understanding of our core curriculum work, our student support, our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports work, and a lot of conversation around those leadership domains that our school leaders really have within their sphere of influence to exercise within their school communities. We also heard from some national experts, subject matter experts, both externally, but also those within our own school system, sharing and deepening our knowledge base there as well. It's a good opportunity for us to also elevate our school spirit as we launch into the new school year. You see here a picture of our early education or Head Start team. We placed it at the center of our conversations, our newly published vision. This is going to continue to be a very instructive document for us as leaders in the school system and continuing to sort of really unpack and understand those skills and dispositions of our graduate portrait, as well as the educator essentials and the system shifts required to make this vision a reality. So I know throughout the week, we continue to return to it, and we'll continue to work with our school community so that we all have a clear understanding of the thinking that went into our vision work. On Friday, we capped off the week. We had Governor Brown, who attended and wished our school leaders a positive school opening and spoke about the opportunity of the Student Success Act from this past legislative session. It was a nice way to cap off a really critical week for us. I want to thank our directors for being present and helping with the celebration at the end. I know you probably weren't expecting to demonstrate dance moves, but it was consistent with the school spirit that we wanted to make sure and show our leaders in collaboration with. The second thing I wanted to mention is, I was also joined by a number of directors earlier today. We had a sneak preview tour with Congressman Earl Blumenauer at Grant High School. We know most of you probably haven't seen it, but it is magnificent, and we're really kind of waiting to unveil it all for our students, actually, on the first day of school. But we want to invite the broader community to join us for the grand opening on September 7th. I'll share a couple of the observations that I know Congressman Blumenauer noticed, and that is, Grant High School is a wonderful example of what modernization can do to make our school facilities more safe and secure, more green, more technologically savvy, and accessible to all of our students, especially students with disabilities. So all of these features were things that were highlighted as we walked around the campus, and it's just simply impressive. What we always enjoy seeing with so many of our facilities, modernization projects, is the tying in of some of the old aspects of the building into the new design. Here we are, standing in what used to be the old gymnasium, which is a brand-new art center for our students at the school. So we're excited to welcome our students there on the first day of school. We have had a lot of activity going on this summer, not just with our adults. We did proceed with the Summer Arts Program for students, and they had an opportunity to select a major discipline area in the arts and also explore a different one. The Summer Arts Academy was hosted at Harriet Tubman Middle School. Thank you, Principal Butler, for opening your doors for students from 15 schools representing the Jefferson, Madison, and Roosevelt clusters. Over half of the students who participated are students of color. And thank you, Director Moore, for being there with me on the final showcase performance at the end of the institute. But to give our audience and directors a little bit of a flavor, I think we have a short little video clip highlighting the Summer Arts Academy.
But I felt like he was just, I don't know, looking for a way to bring it up.
Side, back, side, up, side, back, rolling.
All the noise you're going to be hearing today is because of all the arts programming happening in our building.
I thought it would be fun to like get out of the house and like do stuff, interact with people, because usually I just sit on my couch.
So PPS wanted to offer this program for the first time to our kids in the North-Northeast schools. It's a free program that offers dance, theater, band, and art to kids that might not normally get to do that over the summer.
My mom's just like, "Oh, hey, I signed you up for this theater program. You're gonna go. Your sister's gonna be doing art." And I'm like, and now that I'm here, I'm like, "Oh, my God, why was I so like difficult about this?"
You would be such a good actor. You'd be really good at being an actor. So I was like, "Okay, I'll go to theater camp."
We're making like a video, but it's out of clay.
And here today, we're working on stop-motion animation. We've explored all sorts of different medias of like using whiteboards or even animating our own bodies as puppets.
Well, continuing to work on music through the summer keeps their skills up. They will basically be the leaders in their respective schools.
What I would hope these kids take away from the Summer Art Program is something that they can do outside of school that sticks with them, that they want to keep creating and expanding on their knowledge.
I mean, what I really hope is that they just realize that they are all artists.
What I loved about theater camp was just meeting all these people because they're all so great.
I want them to enjoy it and absolutely love what they're doing, to love to dance, to love to play their instrument, to love to be on stage or make art, whatever it is. I want them to love it and have something that's truly their thing.
Well, there you have it. Hopefully, you got a little bit of flavor for what the experience was like from a student and educator perspective. Gratitude to so many of our visual and performing arts teachers who stepped up to work this summer with our students. As I think you probably noted in the video, there was a lot of individualized and small-group instruction, and kids got to explore some arts disciplines that maybe wasn't their typical one. So as an unabashed arts education champion, my hope is that next summer, we just continue to expand and enhance our Summer Arts Academy and open that up to many more students. We always like to feature our students' artistic talents. We did a little bit of that last week throughout the Leadership Institute, but we actually have some very special guests here this evening, and that's two students who participated in the Arts Academy last week. If I could ask them to come up with your permission chair, I think this is our student perspective portion of the agenda. If I could ask Io Dannerlin Manson and Tyone Butler to come forward. We would love to hear how the Summer Arts Academy went for you.
Hello, my name is Tyana Butler. I am 13 years old, and I go to Harriet Tubman Middle School. I would like to begin by thanking Mrs. Pierce and Mr. Maitland for allowing me the opportunity to be a part of the experience that lasted two weeks from July 22nd through August 2nd. I also wish the experience could have been longer, and I hope that it will continue next summer. The camp gave me a chance to meet new people from other schools and build strong bonds with them. I actually took the bus every morning and built relationships with peers from other schools. I have prepared the camp to last a little longer, to really enhance our skills and make us better dancers. The classes that I took were African dance, African drumming, jazz, and hip-hop. My favorite classes were African dance and hip-hop. I would also like to thank the people who taught this, Mr. Seku and Mr. Bunky. Overall, my favorite part of camp was meeting new people from different schools, being taught by teachers from other schools and hearing about their personal stories and changes they had to face and getting to learn different types of dances. I also think that the showcase went really well, and I love that it gave us a chance to showcase our hard work to family and friends. I also think that this could be at least a four-week camp experience so we can really become stronger and more confident. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Io Dannerlin Manson, and I'm going into seventh grade at Harriet Tubman Middle School. Tonight, I'm testifying about a wonderful program that I was so lucky to be a part of. This year, I participated in two weeks of PPS Arts Camp at Harriet Tubman, which is a first matter I'd like to speak to you about. Harriet Tubman has just reopened last year, meaning it has a lack of extracurriculars in comparison to other schools. So if this program is funded next year and better advertised, it would very much benefit the school and its students. Also, Ms. Pierce worked really hard this summer, and I think it would be great to be able to participate next year. This year, I participated in African dance, stop-motion animation, which were my two favorite classes. I would like to thank Ms. Pierce for helping this program happen this year, and Seku and Mr. Bunky for teaching African dance.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again to our talented students, our visual performing arts teachers who made this happen in short order, and a very deserved kudos to Kristin Brason as part of our three-person Central VAPA team for really her leadership in this area. So you heard from our students, we know it's possible, and we look forward to, in fact, doing what they've just suggested, and that's expanding on the opportunity for the coming summer. That concludes my report for tonight.
And that was truly amazing that we got that off the ground so quickly. And I also want to recognize our staff, who was instrumental in putting together the Leadership Institute last week. That was no small undertaking, and the details were really fantastic, from the nutritional services and how they showed up to just everything available for our educators. And we really had a lot of positive feedback from our principals and assistant principals, who are quite inspired for this new school year. So thank you so much.
Can I just say a couple words about the student showcase? It was impressive in any case. I mean, the performances were really extremely good. And there were paintings, and there was cloth, and stop-action videos, and pottery. I mean, it was just across the board. So it was impressive in any case. The fact that it all happened in two weeks was really extraordinary. The quality of the performances and all of the work was really amazing. I'm speaking as a non-artist. I was blown away. And I think, and it was a packed house, including everybody from, you know, not just the students, but their siblings and their parents and their grandparents and community members. It was a great thing. And I look forward to an expanded version next year.
I want to address the students that were here. My name is Michelle. I went to Performing Arts High School here in Portland, and I had a chance to show off my dance skills last Friday, and I was the best dancer here. So keep up that arts.
Thank you, PPS. Thank you, PPS.
It wasn't even close.
There was nobody even close.
Truth be told, she was the only dancer there, so, at least on the stage. There was some dancing going on in the audience.
So I just wanted to add one thing. So it's great to be able to see what happened during the summer, because I think, a lot of people think like doors close at the end of the school year, and that's it until they open again. And I know we also had some other programs that ran this summer. I visited the migrant education program, and also, Michelle and I visited the early kindergarten program. It would be great to get sort of a compilation of what happened this summer, because as we think, especially as we head into next year's budget, what types of things should we be offering during the summer that provides a fuller complement? I think a great example tonight of, you know, not all kids, there's lots of things that can happen in the summertime that meet both the fun quotient and learning quotient. So I think that would be great to get this fall as we head into next year. I know a lot of times, we're having a trailing conversation. By the time we get to the budget, the planning would have already needed to take place, but I think this is a great example or touchdown to use for that planning going forward.
I'm glad you brought it up. One of the buckets in the Student Success Act is actually intended to help support extended learning opportunities, which is something we want to build our own capacity for providing an array of programming for our students. PPS, for a while now, due to the divestment, has really only offered some limited summer school for students who need credit recovery, and then a few other state or federally-funded programming like migrant ed. And so there's a smaller array of activities there, and we can certainly provide you with an inventory of that. But our goal is really to extend the learning in a more year-round basis and into other areas. So it may not be visual performing arts for everybody, but there's certainly no shortage of ideas for a catalog of summer program opportunities for students of all ages. So we look forward to seeing what that could look like, and we'll have some lead time and hopefully some resources to be able to do that for next summer.
All right. Thank you very much for your report. So tonight, we're continuing the discussion from August 6th work session on the Board's three-to-five-year goals, where we had a chance to review draft goals and metrics with the superintendent and senior leadership team. As part of that discussion, Superintendent Guerrero is bringing forward a set of proposed goals. I'd like to ask Superintendent Guerrero to provide an overview, and we'll have a chance to review data and discuss some measurements. And I want to go back to our conversation when we last met. I think this has been a really constructive and open process for us in terms of winnowing down. We good?
There we go.
In terms of winnowing down our goals and really, I think, having an opportunity to have open discussion about what we want to get to, we weren't quite there last time, and I know we had a lot of data requests as well, some of which we were not able to have completely answered tonight, given the Leadership Institute and the fact that we just had a week from our last work session. But this is just our next installment, and then we'll look to approve our goals at our next work session. So Superintendent, do you want to introduce us to what this next iteration looks like based on our discussion last week?
Yes, thank you for underlining that, Chair Konstam. This has been an iterative process, and tonight's no different. Staff has been listening very carefully to your discussion, mainly in work session. So tonight, here, we're bringing it to the regular meeting, and we do have senior staff here on deck who will speak in some detail to some of the goal areas. But from the very beginning, I think, you know, there's a little bit of tension here in that we want to be leaning towards the community's definition of a PPS graduate. As captured in the portrait, you see the statement here, and so how do you quantify that? How do you, through metrics, show that our students are actually becoming better collaborators, more empathetic, et cetera? And we also know we have, as part of our responsibilities, ensuring that students meet some important academic milestones. And so, you know, these goals continue to evolve, but we closed the last work session discussion talking about a limited set of goals, but certainly some that talk about, and we heard almost unanimity here, around making sure that students are able to read, so they can read for content and access core knowledge. And so that a third-grade reading goal seemed pretty important, and we'll, for the audience's benefit, talk about that in a second. Similarly, with mathematics, especially since that foundation is so important as they go into the middle grades. You see a third goal here, which is different from what you've seen. And this is an attempt to kind of compromise and get at, and this is a little bit verbose here of a description, but to try to capture, well, what would it look like if we engaged in students' learning journey, K-12, this middle grades experience, where you started to able to observe and have students demonstrate those skills and dispositions described in the graduate portrait? We want to do in this area. So can we have a goal area that perhaps isn't a test-based metric, for instance, and try to come up with some creative ways to gauge whether students are actually improving in some of these areas? And so what would it look like if a student drew portfolio presentation or panel presentation was able to describe their middle grades experience in a number of different ways? And so we'll talk about that this evening as well. And then we'll end our presentation to talk a little bit about this unanswered question around what does college career readiness mean and sort of what are some proxies for measuring success towards that? So we'll have the staff in a little bit briefer fashion than we did last week, knowing we've only had a small amount of time since, kind of walk through these, just so everyone has the benefit of that. So if I can ask the team to come down for this first one on literacy, I have our Chief
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, Board members. The first goal on third-grade reading, as a narrative, has not really changed. The focus is still on improving the achievement for our students in reading at the third-grade level. The conversation in the general remains constant from the last conversation that we had. I think what has now adjusted is the data that provides baseline. So the metrics remain constant. It's the Oregon State Assessment System for proficiency, and then for progress and growth, it is the MAP assessment at third grade. The other baseline data information on that previous slide remains the same. This is an additional slide that has been added to provide you with additional context. And so when you look at the proficiency rates, they range, based on demographic group, from as high as the white students, right, performing at, 70% of the students performing at proficiency, to 19%, which includes our migrant students and our English-language learners. It also provides you with the number tested and the gap in their proficiency levels by percentage. This sort of articulates the present state in the performance of our students, and that's to serve as a baseline for you when you look at the subsequent slide, which actually then looks at, if you can go to the next slide, please?
Excuse me one second.
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Valentino. Director Bailey, did you have a question?
Yeah. The final column there. What are we dividing?
The final column there, what are we dividing by what?
So, in the, in the, the baseline of percentage proficient, I believe that that is the distance between the all students and their, and their gap, if I'm not mistaken, but.
It's actually the gap between the highest performing student group, which is white students in this case, and each of the other student groups.
Thank you.
It's actually percentage points, right?
Seventy-four percent, which is the highest, minus forty-eight, minus seventeen. Okay.
And then, the next slide that Dr. Suck's put together is now the, is the target scenario following the expectations identified in the goal. The target scenario would look as follows for the specific student groups identified on the first column.
So, I think we heard Board Directors say in our previous discussion is we wanted to really be able to articulate the end size. If you see a dash, it's because the student group is too small, and we want to maintain, we don't want to identify our students per se, so that's why you see that. But we have included the proficiency level there for your information. But if we were to work at that one quarter growth, then you see what that target would look like.
And to the point that the Superintendent has made, if you actually are including the quarter, then don't forget that we're actually asking the students in the subgroup to actually grow the number plus a quarter, but a 25%.
I don't understand the ELL, the 200, is that 204 number a count of or percent? It says percent.
Formatting error, that's a count.
It's a count, okay.
So, these are all projected 2022, 20-
Twenty, twenty-two, yes.
Third grade populations.
Assuming the same number of students that we have this year. We know that will shift, but we don't know what it's going to look like.
This is intended to give us a ballpark, because the cohort won't be identical in the following year.
So, just-
Somebody in four years might be looking back and going.
Not sure this question should be too, but when we had our initial goal-setting discussions, we looked at the data, and the data that I think stood out for most of us was the, we have four subgroups that are in either 19 to 21% only of the students meeting, great level benchmark, that's black, Pacific Islander, ELL, and migrant. And at the time, I think there was a lot of focus on that specific group, about how much lower, and the way that the goal has been set, it is assuming, across the board, the one-fourth percent, correct?
The way it's drafted now, yes.
And so, I'm interested in knowing sort of what would it, maybe not this session, but maybe the next one, what would it take if we're acknowledging that there's even larger gaps if there were, you know, specific resources applied? Could we make an even bigger gain? I know that they get, they're getting a larger number in theory, because the one-fourth between the highest and lowest is more? Or is that, is that right, or is it all the same? But if we could look at that as an option of additional resources versus treating all the subgroups-
Right.
-the same.
And I'd like to, I'd like to second that analysis as well. And question, I appreciate having the data disaggregated by race, but would love to see exactly that, how we can close those gaps that are, that are greater.
I think we were all astounded at our first sort of data literacy session, because I don't know that there historically was a lot of transparency here. So, in the interest of accountability, we've provided that, and we've also sort of given you the actual number of students we're talking about. And it's important to recognize what the gap actually is, and some of those percentage markers are unacceptably high. And so, we want to do two things here. We want to, we want to strive for excellence and lift all students' performance, which theoretically would increase the gap, but we also want to show acceleration for those student groups. And so, to suggest that we would close all those gaps within four years, which no district has done in the country, what would it look like to be pretty assertive about the interventions and the supports, which would be distinct and customized in many ways for each of these student groups, is I think sort of the discussion at hand that would take resources. Some of it just takes time. Much of it requires capacity building and the right-case management, working with our school leaders. So, what does a smart goal that's attainable and realistic look like? Because we're talking about percentages of improvement that haven't been demonstrated in any urban school system. And so, how can we be audacious about it, but also put some muscle behind it so that, you know, staff can have their mandate to move forth? It also means prioritizing our time and effort if we're going to do that. I can't think of a more noble cause. But how do we sequence this work? The work that we need to do with various student groups, in some ways, is common, universal, but we also have to get pretty differentiated when it comes to some of the student groups, all of which involve a certain level of capacity and resourcing.
So, just, can I just follow on that? I guess, just, I would be interested in knowing sort of, like, here's what we think it would take, and to be aggressive and just put it out there, because even with the aggressive five-year targets, we're still would have students in those, in those four groups below 50% at benchmark. So, I guess I would be interested in hearing, like, here's what we think, we're at the highest leverage, highest return on investments, to really drive that, even if it's, you know, it's creating disproportionate from the other groups. And I also think now is the time to do that, because we're going to have instead of a reallocation of resources, which I would be supportive even if we didn't have new money in, but we're going to have a new set of resources, and I think this is the perfect time. But I guess I would want to hear from you, like, here's how, if we really put all the chips on those, or more chips on that piece, like, what could be possible?
Well, certainly, if we're going to apply a racial equity lens, we have to do that. It would be great in PPS to model what at the state level via a black student success, a native student success plan, and now a Latino student success plan, if we could point to some strategies that are being demonstrated here. I also want to point out, in district and school improvement, you're not going to see this perfect diagonal line of linear improvement either. You're going to see a slow curve building upwards as you build capacity, and then acceleration will start to appear if you stay focused. So, we haven't tasked the staff with now talking about, these are the goal areas we're starting to land on, what are those three to five high-leverage strategies at a systems level that we would be prepared to lead across those schools where we particularly see concentrations of these student groups?
I think Superintendent, too, as part of our process as a board, you know, we're focused on our goal setting now, and then after that, we'll be focused on, okay, what are the accountability metrics that we're going to set so that we can really track these? And part of that will be being able to take a deep dive with staff to understand, okay, help us understand what the strategies are that are going to help us reach these goals we're setting. And we've been in this kind of delicate balance where we want to have really bold aspirational goals, but we also, they need to be achievable, and they need to be reasonable. And so, at that latter part of the process, where we're digging more into the strategies, and then we're having accountability metrics on the strategies, then as we move into the budget process, that's when we can talk about, well, how could we fortify the certain strategies that you may be recommending with more of a allocation of resources? So, it's just kind of playing out this whole process that we're really at the beginning of now.
I think we're exactly where, I'm happy we're at. Many, many district leaders, governance teams around the country don't get to this point. They haven't, with their community, defined a vision, they haven't immersed themselves in the performance data, and asked themselves, if we're going to performance manage, our key responsibility in educating students, what are those key indicators, key performance metrics? Which is why we're putting a lot more attention into this area for the coming year. Once we've landed on the general goal areas, absolutely, that is going to be a large part of what you see articulated in our multi-year strategic plan, which will be tied to a multi-year financial plan recommendation. So, we're starting to sort of sketch out what some of those strategies would look like, knowing that some of these would be pretty standard, and we have a lot of growth that we need to demonstrate, and there are some evidence-based practices out there, and some of them just take time. It doesn't matter how many dollars you pour into it, you're still talking about the same teacher adopting practice. And so, but we can bring a different level of specialization to bear with resources, for sure. With your permission, I'll move on to the next goal area. It's probably similar in some of the questioning that you're raising.
So, the question I'll raise for both of these is if we're just looking, and it's been raised before, but I want to reiterate, if we're just looking at benchmark, and we've seen it before in this district, you get a perverse incentive if you're a building leader to focus on the kids who are right below the benchmark, and if they're further behind, well, you'll still provide services, but you're really going to pour your extra resources into a kind of a triage thing. And so, I want to make sure we don't have a perverse incentive here. And also, and we were talking about this, seeing more of a disaggregated distribution rather than, you know, percent above or below, to see where students are on the scale.
Right. So, we're conscious of that and want to be mindful of not encouraging. But the fact is, the gaps are so large, you're not going to meet these targets by just focusing on kids on the bubble, you know? You're going to have to do some wholesale change in practice if you're going to get at it, but we definitely want to be sensitive to, you know, not being test-driven per se to get the number that we want to see.
And I want to agree with Director Bray Madsen. I, you know, this, this presumes sort of a certain budget package around resources and PD and strategies and so on. There's probably, as you say, it takes time, so there's probably diminishing returns. You can, you can pour more money in, but just to see some alternatives, basically a budget outline in terms of where we put resources, because to me, this is priority number one.
Kind of piggybacking on that, so I think that would be good. I think it would also be helpful to get, to put this in a context. So, if you, if you looked at a district that had extraordinary success in raising achievement levels, what did that look like? So, I mean, we're looking at this kind of in isolation, and it would be, I think it would be helpful, for me at least, to get a sense of how aggressive is this in the larger scheme of things? Because whenever you're looking at improvement in really any kind of practice, there's got to be a lead time. You're not going to get, you're not going to get 4% growth every year. You're going to start off with probably 1%, and then it'll grow to two, so you've just doubled. And then, you know, over, so it would be, I think it would be helpful to know what is realistic.
I think the next time we-
Aggressive but realistic.
I think the next time we have this conversation, we'll have the benefit of our new Director of System Performance, Dr. Russell Brown, and that's exactly what we can expect to learn from his presentation.
I think for, absolutely, and for illustrative purposes, you know, if it's just been kind of 333, realistically, 234 or 357, those are pretty aggressive margins of improvement overall, but I think we all feel the urgency regarding some of our students are rather far behind, and we've got to do a whole lot better. No matter what we do, they have to be progressing at a super accelerated rate, and that's going to require a particularly specialized support plan, so, and that's going to require partners in this work, and our families being engaged in very specific ways. So, I'm already previewing a little bit about what some of that work would entail, but just to get through this, why don't I-
Just, I wouldn't want to, I mean, if we made big progress in reducing the number of students who are way below benchmark, to me, that's a success, but that doesn't get picked up in this particular measure. So, that's, if we can figure out some ways to add to that, that would be great.
I think we're all trying to find that balance of progress. Mathematics was the topic area as an indicator for fifth grade. Dr. Sarah Davis or Dr. Valentino, either one of you want to cover this one?
Yeah, I see. Hi. So, as with the reading goal, this one has not significantly changed. What has changed is the disaggregation of data on the following two slides. And so, we just kind of, we have, have more nuanced metrics to kind of see where we are and ways to move forward with growth. I'm sorry, I'm at a point.
So, the double-digit percentages are just sobering for all of us to see how historically this trend has persisted, not unlike in other large urban school systems. What we're trying to get at here is we want to make accelerated progress in these areas. As our, as our STEAM leader, you're hearing the conversation, what's attainable, what's realistic? If resource was not, you know, a barrier, what would aggressive performance look like?
And we have, I mean, there are just some amazing things that we can do within mathematics. We have a great cadre of teachers. It just has not, it has not gotten significant focus for a long time. And as many of you may have heard me say, our society does not genuinely believe that all students can succeed in mathematics. And so, even as you look out across legislative initiatives, they almost always focus on literacy, because as a society, we believe that everyone can read, but we don't, as a society, believe that everyone can do math. And so, like, just having this as one of our goals now, like, we're taking that first step, that as a district, we're saying we really deeply believe that every, every student can learn mathematics. And just from my own experience, I was not successful in K-12 mathematics. I graduated in the third quarter of my high school class. I got into college on SAT scores, because I am one of those annoying people who tests well. But because my family had money, I was allowed to be fairly unsuccessful my freshman and sophomore year in college. But then I learned how to be a student in college, and I got those chances, and I fell in love with math as an adult after the graphing calculator came out. And math became a puzzle, and patterns, and problem solving, and interactive. And that's why I'm so passionate about it, because it can be that for every single student in our schools. And so, yeah, we have huge amounts of growth, but we have such an ability and a potential to make unbelievable and significant changes in our- to make unbelievable and significant changes in our, in our students' lives moving forward. But, but yeah, we really need to make those.
And I really appreciate it. You know, I've heard the kids in kindergarten through second grade are sort of learning to read and then after third grade, they're reading to learn. And asking you, what's the math equivalent of that? Is that if children by fifth grade meet these key indicators in math, then it's a much greater indicator of their success at being able to find that puzzle and that pattern that you did with your graphing calculator.
And fractions are that key indicator, but fractions are one of the standards at the fifth grade. But there is a problem-solving functionality with, I mean, anything can be taught with rote memorization, but to truly deeply understand fractions, if we can get our kids graduating fifth grade with that deep understanding of fractions and whole number division. And then I was talking with some of you, like if I say the number nine, it should have a threeness to you. Like nine should, like you should be able to, nines and threes should somehow be, you know? And that, but that's fractions and that's number sense and all students can do that. They just need to have the opportunities to interact and engage with it as a puzzle and problem solving and with manipulatives and multiple ways of solving it and talking about the cool ways that they solve the problems. And so, so I, we have a big step to take, but I am absolutely positive that we can be successful.
So I'm just curious. So you had to pick one, an elementary school, and you picked fifth grade. But is there like a third grade corollary? Because I'm just wondering if you looked at the third grade math data disaggregated, whether it'd be very similar to the third grade reading and we're just measuring-
It's unfortunately worse.
Pardon?
It's unfortunately worse.
Okay.
For mathematics. And so the two hit that fifth grade goal, we will be doing a significant lift pre-K5. And so if every student leaving fifth grade with a deep understanding and number sense, we will have to, so the theory of action that goes into it will have to be a PK5 theory of action. And I know the superintendent has that as part of his mindset and his goals, as does the chief academic officer. And so we could all, you know, we could set those benchmarks, interims, but those are the types of things that kind of lean into the theory of action that we're going to have to have a transformative view of mathematics, PK5, to hit that fifth grade goal.
And my understanding, Director Brim Edwards, is that we picked fifth grade because it's that sort of transitory space in math of, like I said, with third grade is they're learning to read and that tells us at third grade, are they on track with their reading? And math is the same. They've kind of built on this scope and sequence throughout elementary school and fifth grade is really that indicator of are they, have they grasped it fully and mastered it so that they're ready for that sort of more advanced math that comes in middle school? Is that correct?
Yep.
So do we have the curriculum in place?
So we're-
And do we have the buy-in broadly into that curriculum, if it is in place?
So it's part of our guaranteed and viable curriculum that we've had teams working on. And so that will be a work in progress as, you know, our teacher teams dig into it, as, you know, we just finished a full-day workshop with instructional leadership teams from all of our campuses across the district to really dig into the curricular units and to work with the leadership teams on how to go from a unit plan to planning for engaging instruction. And there was a lot of excitement in the room for, it's like, oh, these are the resources and this is what we have. But there will be future budget asks because we will need some significant professional development to shift. Just to, I mean, we really, we'll need to increase the mathematical comfort and knowledge and belief and mindset of our teachers, of our administrators, of our central office, of our parents. I'm probably one of five people in the room who truly deeply believes that every student can be successful in mathematics because our society has just trained us so deeply that they can't. And I've just, I've done so much work with little kids and with the ways that things can be changed that like I can promise you, every kid can do math. They may not be able to do it the way it's taught right now, but every kid can do math. And so there is going to be a lift involved. And so the GDC is our first step. It's getting us really focused on the standards and what kids should be able to do with their grade levels. And then we're going to have to come behind that with what are the best pedagogies and what are the ways to do that? And then we have a baseline set of instructional materials, but there's some amazing open-source materials that are coming online. And so we don't necessarily need a textbook adoption, but we need that deep pedagogical professional learning so that teachers are better able to filter the open-source materials that are available. And so we've made a good first step and I think, I think we're in the right place to make additional steps and it's going to be work.
So I think the other step, I think that it's really interesting what you said about expectations and I see that everywhere. And it's also a relevance question. You know, reading, I think people see the relevance because it's used every day. The quadratic equation, not so much.
Do you hope that the person who built the bridge that you drove here over knows the quadratic equation?
No, but I mean, and for the average person.
And so it is that puzzles and problem solving. And so you do more math in your life than you actually think that you're doing, but you think of it in terms of problem solving. You know, picking which parking garage to park in is actually frequently an algebra equation because there's this much to enter the garage and this much per hour, but this garage is just a flat rate. And people, they don't see the mathness in that because they just see it as the everyday and what they're doing. And so I do hear you, like full-on being able to derive the quadratic equation. Do I think that every person I stop on the street needs to be able to do that? No. But there actually, there really is a deep relevance in everyday mathematics and in the problem solving and in seeing how things fit together.
We obviously need to go grocery shopping together because I make my daughter figure out the price per ounce so we can figure out which thing to buy. So math for her is an everyday situation.
Yeah.
Should I tell her that it actually says that on the shelf?
That's cheating.
Years ago, when Excel was missing an obvious growth function and I had to go, okay, and I pulled out natural logs and exponents and had to reverse engineer that. But that's, you know, and I supposedly have a really math-centric job and there's a lot of math that I don't use. I love math.
So before we move on to our last goal, which is the new goal or an amalgam of a lot of things that we talked about last time, I just want to make sure that we all feel comfortable with these first two goals and that they are, seem like a representation of our previous discussions on these areas and that we likely want to move forward with them. Any questions or concerns about these first two goals?
So, I do. I want to, if I look at this adding on the second, fifth grade math goal, it's the same subgroups that are, but this time plus Latinos, that are, you know, ranging anywhere from 23, 12 to 23% meeting benchmark. And if you translate that into our target, if I do the math, that even if we meet our targets, it's just 277 more students, which is about, looks like about, I don't know, 13, 12, I want to get a percentage, is 12 to 13%. So I, I like the focus, but I would want, somehow it just seems like we should be able to, that's just 10% of our students that we're moving to benchmark over five years. So I-
It's three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Well, three, three years.
What's the big difference?
Okay, so, so I'm sorry. So three years.
It's like 700 students, right?
I'm looking at the math.
Are you looking at the count?
This is a math test.
So these?
So I'm not counting free and reduced because those are in some cases, I'm assuming double counts.
Double count.
So I'm looking at the ELL students, which is 102, Latino, which is 106, and Black, which is 69.
Okay.
So can I-
It says on the chart, 326 students.
Yeah. But-
Director Scott? So I guess the thing, the point I'm trying to make, sorry, just finish my point, is that I would like a potential sort of, a super up on the subgroups that are the lowest versus just across the board. I'd like to see what that would look like.
Which is what we've tried to do with the second statement in each goal area in accelerating their target. You want to see it be even higher.
Well, this is part of our conversation that we need to have about the achievable part of SMART goals and, you know, what, how far we can get.
We all want to see them at 100% and yet this district never has. So what does the next three years' worth of accelerated growth look like if we're aggressive about it? Resources are not an issue. Teaching and leadership capacity is there with the core content knowledge that they need to actually do the work. We also need a whole apparatus around the case management that would, that would need to go into this kind of work. All doable. And even if we did all the right things, what's a reasonable target that we can, we can feel like is reasonable?
I guess I should amend my earlier statement because I don't think it's just about money because we, in some schools, already have a very high per-student expenditure. So what are the other things? Maybe Director Scott's, Director Bailey's. Sorry, that was like miss on both fronts. That it's not just the funding piece of things. So what other things do we need to do that would make people uncomfortable that can push the bounds? And you may come back and say that, like, we've exhausted everything, but I guess I would be interested in hearing you say, there's no other strategy, either financial or non-financial.
Yeah, I think you have the published adopted budget book there. And I think what you noted in the school-by-school pages is the per pupil expenditure. Some of our most rapidly improving schools have actual, in some cases have among the lowest per pupil expenditures. Some of our more affluent schools didn't show the same rates of improvement. So it, yes, resources make a difference in the kind of work you're doing, but the actual kind of work that you're embarking on matters even more. And that's what we would need to get at in all, where pockets of students are actually situated to make sure that that's the experience they're being exposed to.
So just to jump in on this point, one of the benefits of multi-year goal setting is that we can adjust as we go. And I think picking up on Director Brim Edwards' point, we would all like to see these grow. I think the district and superintendent and staff have said, this is what we think we can get to with current resources, but we can be checking back a year from now to say, hey, how much progress have we made? Were these too aggressive? Were they not aggressive? And adjust those goals on an annual basis as needed. I do think, Director Brim Edwards, your point about the small number of students actually can be really powerful. Sometimes solving these really big problems is hard, but solving a much more targeted group is easier. It still takes resources, it still takes effort, but it's a little bit easier. So I think, I think we may be able to do that. I would, I'm really comfortable with what we've put on the table as a starting point and then revisiting this to see, you know, can we be more aggressive? Maybe a year from now, as you mentioned, you know, we are probably going to see a slow ramp up and things are going to accelerate in the future. We need to be careful for that too, but these are not set in stone for the next three years.
I think part of that acceleration too is not just the specific interventions on these specific areas and certain grades, but it's really the result of so many systems improvements, professional development work that is the ongoing rebuilding of this district that will all come together to play part.
So I would say yes to the two goals in terms of goal areas and the questions we raised around metrics.
To acknowledge the capacity building and learning curve, how does the board feel about a 2-3-4 percentage rate increase? It still gets us at the 9% that it acknowledges that we're still firming up foundational work, building curriculum where it hasn't existed, putting in place a balanced assessment system where it didn't exist, jumping into continuous improvement processes with our leaders in schools where it didn't exist.
I assume that that was not a rhetorical question?
How do we feel about a 2-3-4 versus a 3-3-3?
Yeah, no, I think that's, it makes total sense. And I think actually laying out the path, I mean, that is part of goal setting, right? It doesn't have to be linear. It can definitely be something nonlinear.
I think we have to assume it's not going to be linear, right?
It won't be.
Yeah. So I think that once we settle on these goals, then I think the next task is going to be figuring out the progress measures. So a year from now, what are we going to be looking at to see if we're on track to meet the three-year goal? And, and yeah, at that point, I think it would be helpful to know what your expectation is for each of these goals in terms of one year from now, what are we likely to see? You know, and probably have a, you know, a low expectation, a medium and a high. If we're really knocking it out of the park, what would it look like? So I think the progress measures are going to be, as difficult as it is to come up with with these goals, I suspect the progress measures are going to be trickier.
I have a question about that though, because of that growth curve, we would expect, I mean, does nine months or one year of data give us enough time to actually accurately measure progress? We're not, in other words, we're not expecting a whole lot of progress that first year. It's sort of flat before it goes up.
Right. I think if the aggregate percentage seems lower than the audience might expect, this is why we went back a number of years and you actually just see a fluctuation by a percentage point or two over the last three, four years. I think we know, we just instituted some interim measures across the district, the MAP assessment. That's been instituted more in the reading across schools and introduced in math in some schools. And so we would need to ramp out, scale out the implementation of that so that you could have a consistent progress monitoring tool if the MAP is going to be an important predictor of how we expect students to do on the summative test at the end of the year. So, you know, I think it's true. We're going to have to go through the same exercise and look at how our students are doing on that formative assessment to try to equate a rate of improvement there as predictive of the improvement rate we want to see here. And we'll work with our partners at NWEA who construct that map and work with other districts and states on that very question.
So I'm just going to give my gut reaction to 2-3-4. I have, I think it's a hard, going to be a hard sell to the community that we can't do better than 2% when we're at 12 to 13% or, you know, in any of these measures. And it's not an intellectual reaction to like, I could see if you do the math, well, that makes sense, you get to, you know, 2% and this is what the projection is and it's not linear. I just, I think that will be a hard conversation with the community that we can't, I guess I go back to just looking at the individual student numbers and the difference between 2 to 3% or 2 to 4%, the actual numbers of students isn't going to be that much. And if, again, like what sorts of things can make, cause discomfort, what we could do this year, whether we've got like TOSSAs and reading coaches, are they assigned to the right school? Do we have the right strategies? Do you have the right school improvement plans at the places where you have the most students, not a benchmark? And I don't know the answer, I'm just, it's more of emotional, like-
Sure. It's emotional to us too, to see these numbers. And I was referring to in the aggregate, right? So the spring before my new administration appeared, this district's literacy rates went down 3%. So we took them back up 2% and, you know, we still have, and that's before instituting curriculum and assessments and PD. So we are hopeful that we will see an even better trajectory moving forward, but I agree, a 1% improvement for our student groups that have historically been underserved is not- improvement for our student groups that have historically been underserved is not acceptable to us as educators. So I don't refer to their rate of growth being that. I'm referring to the aggregate of all students, which they represent some portion of, but we certainly want to accelerate their outcomes.
And I think, you know, to quote Director Scott, he talked about the moral outrage of looking at some of these numbers and seeing how much we, as a district, have failed some of our student groups. And I also want us to be careful about continuing to overpromise, underdeliver on the flip side, Director Brim Edwards, of if we say we are going to get to seventy-five for everybody and we, again, fail. What is realistic? What is good faith? What is collaborative growth that we can push towards? And I take a lot of, it's not perfect, but if you look at the Goal Two baseline data, thirty-nine of our black students were proficient, and the projected goal would be a hundred and eight, which is more than double the number of students would then be proficient. And I feel like these goals are not the end. We're not saying, okay, in 2022, we're going to throw a victory party that PPS is the most perfect district. We have it all figured out. I think this is a step towards getting to that place where all students, I mean, even if we meet these numbers on math, we still have most of our student groups under fifty percent meeting, which doesn't fit that ideal that all students can do math. And so I think for me, this is a good faith first step, and how do we do it in a way that is aggressive, that does honor those communities that we have long not met their needs, and yet continue to do so in a way that is in good faith and not overpromising, underdelivering.
I do hope this goal-setting exercise the board is undertaking is similar in the spirit with which we approach our schools' improvement efforts in that as we evolve into adopting a more performance-management orientation, one important step is to set some performance goals and to be able to articulate the effort towards an improved outcome. I don't want to see it as we failed to meet a goal, but rather, what are we learning from the process? Because some of the strategies we adopt may show a great outcome for a student group, but we need to, we need, we may need to make adjustments in our approach with the different. So I hope that the fill forward is a little bit of latitude that will need to be required because there aren't a lot of places to point to around the country that have figured out the correct recipe for tackling this level of differentiation while moving a school system forward. So sort of that's the commitment we can make is to get, to be transparent in saying, here's what we're attempting, here's what we're going to stop doing, or we're going to move this direction to try to get at those performance targets we all want to see.
The other piece of it, too, just going back to the big picture, is that this becomes more of the lens through which we view all of our decisions, all of our budgetary decisions, you know, all of the ways that we're trying to transform this school district. How does this or, or does it not contribute to raising achievement, especially for our lowest-performing schools and students?
That is a key point because the budget, as we were budgeted for the projects and initiatives in place, came before this, right? So there would have to be some retooling to refocus on this effort, which will then impact other initiatives and other projects that also have value. So it, it really comes down to, this year, we're still at some storming and norming and setting foundation, while at the same time trying to push initiatives that, at this point, would be aspirational at best, but we're moving forward with those. A lot of that would have to be paused so that we can refocus and then retool so that the quality of professional development shifts, the, the space and times allotted for schools to connect would have to also shift. Because right now, they're working off of an understanding that they have a year to gain a deeper understanding of what they're being asked to do, and, and we're gaining a better understanding of how best to support them. So we're all learning this process together. And so accelerating into this will require more attention given to that and less to other things.
So I think this is an important point. Our chief academic officer is, we feel the urgency. We also have an organization to build the capacity of to do this work. And so while we're doing that foundational work, how do we get serious about the supports and interventions for students that historically have, have been left behind? So that, that's the tension here.
So can I ask just a clarifying question about the, did you say two, three, four? Is that?
Yes.
So that's average across?
Overall, yeah.
Yeah, maybe the way that would make me feel less, more comfortable is that we be really explicit that for those students who have been historically more underserved, that the numbers are more aggressive. Because I think sometimes we get this loss when we talk about averages is, everybody thinks about their own individual student, and if you're one of, part of the not being successful and not at benchmark, it doesn't matter what the average is. So maybe the, the fine point is, or the nuance is that for the, that's the average and that we've got some really, there's going to be some really specific strategies and theory of actions around this.
One thing I had suggested previously is for each goal area, you have one A, one B, one C, where you actually call out the more aggressive percentage of improvement with the N size so that we're actually capturing that in a really concrete way. Folks will see that it's a whole lot more. It has to be a whole lot more than the two, three, four, probably, you know, some number much higher than that.
I mean, when we talk about the progress measures, the interim measures, it, it can't be just the overall average. Because I, this is a, this is a two-part goal, both of these. I mean, you've got the overall average, but then you've got the, the different student groups that are supposed to be making a twenty-five percent incremental change. So the progress, you're going to have to have progress measures for each of those groups to know if, you know, in year one, year two, do you even have a prayer of hitting that twenty-five percent? So I, I mean, it's going to have to be called out. It probably won't, it, it won't be called out in the goal, but when we talk about the progress measures, we're going to have to be calling that out, right?
I, I think it's a, it's a great point, and I, I do think we're going to have to be explicit about it because if we have a goal that says two percent, I, I think we...
Sure. We, we don't want to communicate that that's the rate that some of our groups in particular that are behind, that's our only expectation. We have a much higher expectation than that, so.
One more, and then let's move on to our third goal.
Are there gender differences amongst these groups that are substantial, and if so, that's another dimension?
Yeah. That, that's something that some of the directors had noticed in our data binders, that there were, in some cases, some, some gender differences, some variability. Shall we move on to the third?
Let's do it.
Okay, eighth grade, this needs development, and it's a verbose description here, but just to try to capture what we think we heard is, if we were to be a little bit innovative and leading edge here, and not unaligned to the middle school redesign we want to embark on as an experience for our students, what, what would it look like to assess that learning progress in those skill and disposition areas of the graduate portrait via something like a digital portfolio that a student would publicly present before a panel? What would it look like if we brought together educators and others to develop a rubric that captured an expectation for how students would speak to, present, and prepare to talk about not just their progress in core academic areas, but some of those areas that I know our directors were excited about to hear in how they've attended to their social-emotional development or their leadership skill capacity as during their middle grades, their arts or their exploratory CTE experiences. What would it look like if students were actual active learners of their experience and were able to reflect on the three years of their middle grades' experience before a panel and get much more creative about that? So we, we started to do a high-level survey of other districts that are giving some thought to this and some districts around the country that are also embarking on middle school redesign. We, we have an example, and this one's an Oregon district, but we have Ashland School District that actually is doing some interesting work and outlining expectations. I don't know if the AV support can, can click on the link here. I don't have a laptop connected to this presentation, but what they're able to, what they've articulated for students and families is sort of the hoped-for goals and objectives of their middle grades' experience and let students know early on what the capstone will be at the end of that eighth grade. So if you recall, just to jog our memories, as we've had students come in to share, whether it's a foreign learning experience or some of their capstones, we talked about, as we embark on redesign work, what would a field experience look like that students could describe and connect to their learning? What if every middle grader had to embark on some service learning project as a requirement of their middle grades' experience and presented as a component of their panel presentation? What if we captured all of the progress that students made around a checklist of well-rounded items, and that was captured in a digital portfolio, and that was presented before parents and educators, and students were provided with some three sixty-degree feedback there? So we have the link there for you. Not sure if we can pull it up, but it essentially outlines what the experience is intended to, to provide for, for students and an opportunity for students to sort of reflect on that. So if we spent some time really building the connection to our graduate portrait, how do we, in an open-ended way, allow some personalization of that for students and yet still be able to give it an assessment that, that students have, have made progress along a few different dimensions of the portrait?
I think part of the conversation that we had at the end of our last work session on this was that we wanted a goal that captured some of these social-emotional points that are so tied to our Portrait of a Graduate. And I think this is seeking to do that. One question that I have here is that it seems to me like a lot of this depends on the predicted reconfiguration and reimagination of our whole middle grades' curriculum, which is at least a year away. So it's, I don't understand what our metrics would be prior to, prior to that.
You're raising the same question we had internally. Is there a metric that could serve as a proxy while we develop this work? You'd have to tease one element out.
I would think was, and I, I pulled this up on my laptop, and it looks pretty cool, just at a very, very first glance.
Yeah.
Reasoning and problem solving, one of the metrics. Civic and social responsibility, have you demonstrated that? Knowledge of sustainability in the natural world and our relation to, relationship to it, have, have you demonstrated that? A whole timeline through the year of pulling stuff together, working in a team. I, I would think a first-year metric of just planning and putting together a measure and having that discussion at the middle school level would be, that in itself would be like taking our vision and deepening that conversation for the middle grades would be a pretty cool process.
So I think we're pulling it up here now.
I can see students engaged, staff engaged, public engaged on this.
So this is an example of a middle school in Ashland, and sort of the, the capstone project has been detailed out for, for students and families. But it essentially outlines what those key areas are. So you see the core academic knowledge, which is in our own vision, but it articulates some of the things that you just listed out, Director Bailey. And then as, as you go down through the handbook, it affords students the opportunity to demonstrate their growth in those areas, and some initial work that they've done on how to rubric this inquiry project so that that learning can, can, can be demonstrated. So you see that it's not just an assessment piece, but it's, you know, demonstrating fluency with technology tools or public presentation. They, they've attempted to find a creative but well-rounded way to really promote out eighth graders they feel have a good foundation to, to, to have a successful high school experience. So if I could ask Dr. Aurora Wood to come down here as we work with some of our partners on our college and career readiness work, this is not unlike some of the work that our partner organizations are beginning to do with other school districts. And we do have a fourth goal that we inserted in here just to give a little bit more of our thinking on college and career readiness, but I thought it'd be good if, if Dr. Wood gave you a little bit more description.
I want to take just a moment as a time check before we go into this. I want to let, excuse me, I want to let members of the audience know that we are going to hear the complaint after this item before we have our discussion of the levy referral, which is next on the agenda. But I know we have several parents here, and we will get to that after we finish the schools' discussion. Sorry for the delay.
So we, through our Partner Connect platform, have connected with already over six hundred partners in the Portland area who have signed up and have put themselves out there to offer different types of experiences for students. And so that was the initial rollout. We were able to get interest from six hundred people in the community. And so with, I think, a big rollout and some advertising and explanations and of the different opportunities, I think that that number would expand. And the, the platform's called Partner Connect, and they volunteer, that's how we have been connecting our CTE students with career-related learning experiences. So the Curly requirements at the high school level, that's one of the way that we've been, our career coordinators have been acting as the liaison between our high schools and our community members. And they go onto the Partner Connect platform, and they're able to say who has signed up and as an option for a job shadow. And then they'll, they're able to connect students with these partners in the community. So that is something that we could absolutely look to expand upon, to broaden the experiences of our students outside the classroom walls, building on that foundation that's been started at the high school level to bring some opportunities for our middle school students. And also we have some pockets of greatness and things that exist currently in some of the middle schools, such as the IB Community Project. That's required of all eighth graders at IB schools. So we have some work that we could build off of that looks similar and that has some start around the district to broaden those opportunities for more students.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. And I think this goes with our interest of really bringing that college career readiness down through and into, to the grades. And so as we think about redesign work, how do we do some of that pre-CTE exploratory experience as well that our students could, could speak to? So this is an area that would require some development, and we'd want to continue to kind of survey what's happening out there. This was just a good, you know, example here in the state. You can see how one middle school's tackling that. We think we could, you know, put our heads together to, to come up with an example.
I think based on our last conversation, what we want to see is something that, that includes both core competencies. So we wanted to get proficiency and high school readiness from an academic standpoint, as well as some kind of social-emotional indicators or career readiness. And so it seems like we have a bit of a ways to go before we have a goal here that we think makes sense prior to implementation of middle school redesign and that we can monitor in some, in some fashion. But we can look forward to the next part of the conversation.
And if there's an appetite, if as a proxy placeholder, whether staying with the sense of belonging from our survey... sense of belonging from our survey, whether students reporting that as an important, you know, social-emotional feeling is worth capturing for eighth grade while we develop this one out. And then the fourth goal area was the college and career ready. Certainly, there were questions around PSAT and certainly other ways that we could measure college career readiness, but wanted to give Dr. Terry, sorry, I was having deja vu to a previous past colleague, Aurora Terry, here to talk a little bit about this indicator.
So I know last time we met, we discussed the PSAT. And so that is still reflected here, the idea of moving from 48% of students meeting the benchmark to increasing that number to 57%. And if you'll remember, the benchmark is for the 10th grade students taking the PSAT, that they would score a 430 on the reading and writing section and a 480 on the math section is meeting that benchmark. And so I know we'd also discussed potential indicators that would not be reflective of an assessment. And so some ideas, again, along those lines, something that could mirror the eighth-grade project in that a personalized graduation plan or revamping the ed plan and profile, which is the Oregon requirement. And right now, we're using our transcript, the student transcript, to meet the Oregon requirement for the ed plan and profile. But that could also be fleshed out to include things such as personal and academic career goals, post-secondary interests, a senior project, work samples, a learning portfolio that could have resumes, expanded Curly opportunities, that career-related learning experiences, my plan essay. Additionally, we could also look at an increased participation rate in advanced coursework and/or the number of college credits that students are earning in high school, increasing the credit amounts. Another opportunity would be students taking and progressing through a series of CTE courses. So those are also some ideas currently in our high school strategic plan that we have been working on the last two years and working towards. Our goal for the high school strategic plan currently discusses increasing by five percentage points and by 10 percentage points for historically underrepresented students completing at least two credits in a CTE program of study and two credits in advanced coursework. So I think those are some of the goals that we're working on that could be also more clearly articulated as a board priority.
Are you thinking you may come forward with a combination or alternatives?
At your interest and pleasure, absolutely. Absolutely. So I just know, last time we talked, you wanted some ideas of what it might look like if we went away from a standardized assessment like the PSAT. So those are some options. So there are some options if we wanted to look at something besides the PSAT.
So I love the blended measurements because some students do great on the PSAT, others knock it out of the park on CTE, others on arts. Some of our, as we saw last year, then the school year, we have lots of students receiving the SEAL by literacy. So we have, see excellence in lots of different areas. And I think having something that's blended gives us an opportunity to see excellence in every student. So I like the approach versus just the PSAT. Not that the PSAT data's going to go away or anything, I mean, we're still going to have it, but I think these other measures also allow our students, so we can see where they excel in different areas or were they run excellence. So I like that. I did have a question about why the only, you only had ELL under the PSAT, which, I mean, at 1.3%, I'm just, I'm surprised by that number. But they're also, ELLs are not any of the other 11th grade math on time for graduation. I'm wondering why that is.
An oversight, we can.
Pardon?
An oversight in this slide. We have that data and we can make that available. I apologize.
Any further discussion around college and career readiness benchmarks? Does everyone still feel like this, we want to include this in some fashion in a blended fashion as fourth goal?
I'm still thinking about it, both in terms of a goal area I'd rather focus earlier. Not against it, but it's, again, my priority would be earlier grades to build the foundation. Still have issues with using SAT or PSAT. I think you get into the whole testing thing, and then who gets to take the preparation for PSAT stuff? And that's a whole equity issue around that for a test. For, I'd rather not use that as a benchmark. Yeah, our kid's going to take it, sure, but as a benchmark for the district, I'm not sure. And it certainly doesn't measure writing.
I had a question. 11th grade math means what exactly?
From the PSAT, I think. From the PSAT?
No, the 11th grade math is the SBAK, the Oregon State Assessment System.
Oh, okay. That's.
I think it's really vital for us to have a college and career readiness goal because I think with the graduate portraits, one of the things we're seeing is what does it look like for someone to exit PPS as a successful person? And so I think that needs to be part of it. And I've said this before, I think leadership is key, and I think we hit that in the eighth grade in a lot of ways. So I do like the blended idea of what does, I think college and career readiness looks different for different people, so that idea of how do we measure it in ways that are more cohesive, I think is important. I am concerned about our on-time graduation rates, and this is a conversation we've had, how, what does that number actually tell us, other than students pass classes with Ds? I mean, that's the current benchmark, and I think that that doesn't necessarily mean someone is college and career ready. So I'd like whatever metrics we use to really be about mastery and that ability to be a leader, to go into a career, to go to college, to sort of have had a successful school experience that's demonstrable.
Thank you.
I mean, I think ultimately, we're looking at a portfolio kind of measure there, as well as the middle grades. Or at least, I would be interested in that.
So I'm going to echo.
And me as well. I was going to say, because this doesn't tell a whole story about who's going to be successful in life necessarily, and society is made up of people that have abilities in all areas. And if we're going to be modeling inclusivity, then we want to model people that are excellent poets, good dancers, for example.
And then there was the, you know, it's going to be a hard way, it's going to be a long way to get them to that point.
Not everybody, though.
So I wonder if we want to develop this and let it simmer for a year and kind of develop it out, rather than jumping into it right now?
For college and career ready?
Yeah.
And certainly consider that.
So I.
We certainly have our, just doing the others have our work cut out for us.
So I think, I strongly feel like we should have a high school measurement in the mix because I think it's just a missing element. And I think if we don't have one, then it just defaults to graduation, on-time graduation, which I think is not a high standard, nor does it necessarily serve as an indicator of whether students are ready for college and career and life and fulfill the graduate profile. So I'd rather, we, actually, we have a lot of metrics. We've made investments because of Measure 98 in high schools. It seems like we're actually in this phase, I think, somewhat ready to go. There's been lots of work done around the college and CTE and the mapping across the schools where I actually think this could be one of the more inspirational places where we can focus on something besides, I think, as you mentioned, Director Bailey, that some of these things are, seem like just the sort of old basics. And to me, this, if you had some sort of blended measure, we really could shine a spotlight on the great work that's happened in expanding CTE in our schools and arts education and that SEAL by literacy. We've got lots of students coming up through our dual immersion programs that I think we can highlight as well. So I would like to keep a high school measure in.
Can I just suggest, I think staff have put some interesting ideas on the table here, and I'm interested also in the perspectives, but it feels like this is more of a work session topic that we should come back to in the future, because I don't think we're going to solve this goal today. We also have a number of parents here for other items, so.
It's kind of what I was suggesting, is that we could.
But I don't even know if we need to put it off a year. I think we could put it off like two or three weeks and come back to the, come back to it to see if we can get to some resolution.
Are we voting on it next session?
Well, I think we can discuss that. I think we still have some fairly open-ended questions around our goal setting to try to get to the place where we all feel this is what we want to spend our next three years measuring and monitoring and thinking about on a monthly basis.
Can I just, on this point, because I want to come back to what I'm going to continue to say, goals are not static. And so I think it's totally, I think, yes, we're going to adopt goals soon, and I think if the board is comfortable with the first three goals, we can adopt those while still continuing to talk about goals four and five. And you can add them at any time during the year in terms of, you know, because the district has a whole bunch more than these in terms of data and goals that they're tracking, so.
So if I'm hearing correctly, as a next set of direction to staff, you want to have us come back with two or three measures, maybe CTE courses completed, arts pathway courses?
Advanced coursework, AP IB dual credit completion.
Understanding that kids are going to choose different pathways. What we want to show is that they're persisting through them as a proxy for college career readiness. Okay. And we'll have to get the numbers for each of those areas as well.
So I think there's still questions about core competencies, especially for me, around writing and how, because I don't think we have a tool to assess that. Just want to throw that out there.
We don't have a district-wide writing prompt in the 11th grade, for instance.
Okay, I just want to quickly acknowledge that we had at the end of our last work session, we had a little bit of discussion around potentially a fifth goal around English language learners and how quickly they are exiting out of ELL programming. And, you know, we're obviously addressing rate of progress with our first two metrics as we look at English language learners as a subgroup there that has, where we'll have expectations about rate of progress. But let's quickly address what this might look like and what might be attainable for our consideration around a goal.
As this appeared, there was excitement in it because we realized that, as many of you know, research has suggested, the students who have reclassified actually outperform even English-only students. And so we really needed to figure what would be the right measure, up at 21 as a metric, and then the measure inside of that. And the improvement has not been identified yet, primarily because we have not had enough. ESL, the ESL department and the tracking of students has not led to that. And that question, for the first time, that people remember here, has come up, has how do we begin to track them in a way that actually aligns them with progression growth over time, to see how they're going to succeed in English-only environments with rigorous academic tasks attached to them? And so while this piece is exciting now, we don't have an identified percentage that would actually be able to, at this point, say, well, we're going to create a three-year or five-year progression based on this baseline. And that's where we are right now, trying to determine that number. And so perhaps if you wanted to speak to that historical context of this, that'd be great.
I don't mind adding in here, too. So unlike the other academic milestone areas where we have, for the aggregate incremental improvement in student subgroups, acceleration targets, another way to draft goals is to just pull out the student group. And so there was some interest in sort of, well, what would that look like for ELs, which we could have a performance target for. As a longtime bilingual educator, and I think a lot of people would agree, we want to be careful in this area and caution us because you don't want 100% reclassification in a given year because that's not how second language development works. There's a healthy margin by which you would expect a certain number of students to be naturally progressing in their second language literacy, but you don't also want to create incentives to reclassify before they're ready to compete in grade-level academic content in English. So we can have a target for it, having worked on language district plans in this area, you know, I just, we would need to be thoughtful about it.
Right, to be continued.
So I just want to, I would like to get the data because I think there's some pretty compelling data that shows, as Dr. Valentino mentioned, of when students actually master English and are reclassified, how they perform. And when I look through the data on whether it's third grade reading, fifth grade math, you know, I guess PSAT at 1.3% of the ELL students, it seems that there's sort of a double challenge that these students have. Not only are they being required to master a content area, but also English. And, I mean, one of the things, looking at the data and having some thoughtful goals around it, I do think it focuses our attention, I mean, data, especially even like bad data or data that is sobering, will focus our attention on something. So I'd like to see the data because I do think this, when you look at, when districts get it right and move students through to proficiency, mastery, that there's huge payoffs on the content side of the ledger.
So familiar with the research, agree, when students have that strong literacy foundation, we said third grade reading, we're assuming that's in English, right? It could be in another language if we wanted to, but we do know when kids have an opportunity to really develop their language literacy, they do do better in the end. And we want to have some measure for, but that's only if there's quality of programming and implementation and fidelity and training and support. And so what we want to do is have some proxy for strengthening our programs for students that are learning English for sure.
I think it's also important to disaggregate the data by formal schooling before students came to PPS, because that's just a change in that population will have a big impact.
Well, that's staff's pass, next pass at iterating these. I think we've taken a lot of notes here. We'll do some further tinkering and look forward to coming back to you.
Thank you very much.
So if I'm the only one who is interested in art school, should I just let that go?
In the what?
The arts school.
I think, you know, at this point, we're seeing arts incorporated in that eighth-grade goal. We're seeing arts incorporated in the college and career readiness. And, you know, that arts, especially band, is near and dear to my heart.
Really?
Really shocking. Leadership and band and math, that's my jam. But I think, you know, it's, again, what, if we can only have five things, what are those priorities? And I at least feel satisfied that arts is being included in really meaningful ways in those other places.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're going to move on to consideration of a Step Two complaint. In accordance with Board Policy 4.50.032P, the district sets forth a specific procedure for resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, and guardians and people who reside in the district in order to resolve formal and informal complaints in a fair and timely manner. Tonight, as a board, we will hear an appeal on a Step Two complaint brought to the board regarding services provided students. regarding services provided students identified as talented and gifted. The board will now consider resolution. Oh! All right. All good? So I thought I'd make you excited. That was a very excellent dance move.
Oh, my gosh.
Still laughing. That's a good thing. The board will now consider resolution number 5945, a resolution to uphold the superintendent's decision on a Step Three appeal, complaint number 2019-04. Do I have a motion? Director Scott moves, and Director Moore seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5945. Ms. Huff, is there any public comment on resolution 5945?
Yes. Ashlyn Riddick and Colleen McCormick.
Hello, my name is Ashlyn Riddick, R-I-D-D-I-C-K. As you know, we are here to talk about the group complaint filed on behalf of over 5,000 tag students and on behalf of all students working above benchmark or capable of doing so. The complaint addresses PBS's violations of state laws related to talented and gifted services. PBS has been out of compliance with Oregon Tag laws for most of the last 20 years. The district continues to float state rules protecting above-benchmark and highly capable students. Over and over, PBS has failed to implement its plans to come into compliance. These facts betray an embarrassing pattern of negligence and disregard for students. Specifically, the complaint including, includes the following: There is not enough central tag staff, there are fewer tag staff positions now than there were two years ago, open positions in the department have gone unfilled for many months. The tag department is also now responsible for other instructional programs. The district does not support the tag department enough. This makes it impossible for tag department to support schools. Tag services are implemented as a, by discretion rather than as district-wide standards. The tag department's budget is too small, which prevents staff from ensuring basic tag services. Central tag staff and school coordinators are not properly trained or resourced. Parents routinely receive misinformation from district offices and school, school staff. Building tag plans are outdated or unfamiliar to staff. A very small number of students receive individual tag plans. Teachers are generally unable to show that students receive rate and level instruction. Critical information is poorly communicated, if at all. Families do not receive meaningful details about second-grade tag testing, parents' rights, or acceleration opportunities. This perpetuates historical inequity and develops new areas of inequity. Opportunities for advanced coursework are not consistent or equitable. For example, single-subject acceleration is available only in math. The process is poorly documented and cannot be considered successful. There are very few students allowed to accelerate in math, must be brought to the class daily by their parent if it is in a different building. Further, there is a limit inequ, there is limited inequitable access to advanced coursework in high school. Freshmen academies require all students to take same classes regardless of ability or achievement. IB programs are only offered to high, to high schools. AP classes are not equitable, equitably offered, nor are they available to all students. Transfers are generally not allowed. Finally, PBS's complaint process is dysfunctional and inadequate. For example, significant misinformation about the complaint process was communicated by multiple district officials, and this Step Three hearing scheduled was confirmed only at 10:00 PM this past Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Colleen McCormick, M-C-C-O-R-M-I-C-K. I'd like to review some mitigations that would address issues raised in this complaint. Aside from obvious solutions, increasing the budget, increased staff, standardized practices, documented policies, true accountability measures, clear communication to constituents, here are some best practices for you all to consider. The use of cluster grouping is a proven instructional best practice that supports all students. In cluster grouping, elementary classroom assignments are made by grouping three to five students with similar strengths together, allowing teachers to more easily differentiate and students to more easily cross-pollinate. Another instructional best practice is to systematically use flexible ability grouping for instruction rather than leaving it to teacher discretion. Flexible ability grouping is a dynamic process of grouping or regrouping students who are working at a similar rate and level so that they can deepen or accelerate during any given unit of study. Consistent use of unit pre-testing would allow teachers to determine what content standard should be taught to each group of students and at what depth, further supporting differentiation and curriculum compacting. Standard use of these practices will improve differentiation of instructions for all students. Notably, these techniques are used successfully in neighboring districts that enroll a high percentage of historically underserved students, such as David Douglas. However, acceleration is the most effective curriculum intervention for capable students. A review of over 380 studies reveals that almost all forms of acceleration result in growth of achievement. Here are a few ideas that can increase access to content-based acceleration. Standardized bell schedules to support out-of-grade-level walk-to programs for math and reading so that all students can access ability-level instruction. Automatic and systemic consideration of curricular acceleration and/or compacting for students performing above benchmarking. And standardized IB program and a true breadth of advanced placement courses available throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Megan Kubler.
My name is Morgan Kubler, K-U-B-L-E-R. Returning to the complaint, the district's first response generally agreed about the insufficiencies of staff, training, and budget, as well as the inconsistency of offerings and inequitable access to appropriate instruction. Here are some experts, extra, experts from the district's response. There is not currently sufficient staff in the general tag department to support a system-wide approach to instructional practices for talented and gifted students. There is not sufficient budget to support a system-wide approach to instructional practices for talented and gifted students. The schools are not supported enough to consistently implement a system-wide approach to instructional practices for talented and gifted students. PBS said there are inconsistent practices across the district regarding access to services and to appropriate classes and that it has plans to address access for students. The district said enrollment in IB, AP, or honors classes does not automatically show that a tag student's rate and level of learning are being addressed. The finding regularly, the finding regarding this complaint is that services vary by campus. Regarding its failure to implement and evaluate tag services, PBS says that it has created a plan to address implementation and evaluation in the future. PBS assessment of its dysfunctional complaint process is that parents receive responses to their complaints that are consistent with Division 22 requirements. The Step One response ends with a statement that PBS will again self-report being out of compliance with the Division 22 area of meeting rate and level of tag students. At Step Two, the superintendent's office pointed to its latest five-year plan, the current staffing levels, and the existing, existing inequitable high school offerings and assertions of eventual improvement. The district says it will be fully compliant with tag laws starting in the 2024-25 school year. I'd like to share the short-term improvements that the district said they would put in place during the coming five years to make a real difference to the students.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite everyone who wants to show PBS this as an important issue, to stand while Morgan finishes.
Many parents and students have been here before, speaking about how you are failing in me and the majority of students who are highly capable. So many, so many of us have been in this room, month after month, trying to help you work towards equitable opportunities for all students. You have told us over and over, and for longer, in fact, than I've been in school, that you have a plan for highly capable students, and yet there is nothing to show for it. Another five years is not acceptable for me. I will be a senior before tag services are implemented for our timeline. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment? All right, I'd like to open it up for board discussion on this resolution. We have before us, would we, would we like a recap of the staff recommendation? We all have had the summary of the staff. Superintendent?
Linda Smith, our district tag coordinator and our CIO.
Just a, just a brief recap of the thinking that went into the recommendation before the board, the analysis.
Thank you very much. So we submitted a tag plan to the state as required in Division 22 in January, enlisting our five goals for our three-year plan from 2019 to 2022. And it, within that plan, it did describe some of the ways in which we feel that we can bring the district into compliance through professional development, through ensuring that we are identifying more historically underserved students. We need to work with our partners in order to come up with writing individual tag plans for each one of our 7,752 gifted and talented students as of this year that are in synergy, as well as, I just have a blank, what is the one I'm missing? Oh, yes. And then, of course, writing extensions and adding strategies within our GVC curriculum, our guaranteed viable curriculum for the units that are being written in our core subject areas within the district. Also, last, at last year, too, I want to say that we trained all of our, all of our teachers in all of our schools on rate and level. It was quite an undertaking, but we did get that work done. Each one of the tag facilitators is a tag facilitator in each one of our school buildings who is responsible, is the, is the key person for the contact between parents, teachers, administrators, and the district tag office. They supply information, resources, bring back professional development that they receive from the tag department each and every month, as well as help facilitate the testing schedules for all of our students that we do test for identification, including the universal testing that we do for second graders into September, first of October. So there's that partnership with the schools as well on the testing.
Want to open it up for questions?
So our tag plan was submitted to ODE.
Yes.
And they don't approve it, is my understanding.
That's correct.
But maybe you can share what their response was to our submission?
So, so we are to submit the OD, to ODE, our plan showing what our areas of growth and goals are going to be for the year, giving specific information. It is a framework in which they present to us. We fill in ensuring that we have all of the correct documentation, how many students we serve, what kinds of high school courses that are accelerated. So it's basically giving ODE a glimpse at how we provide service to our tag students. And in Portland Public Schools, we provide that delivery through the classroom teacher at the school level, except for the program at Access, which is an alternative program for highly gifted children. So we, they received that, we got an email stating that we had, you know, submitted the plan, but there was really no feedback from that plan that we submitted.
It's a complete plan.
A complete plan, we, we checked all the boxes that we needed to do, basically.
And what was our status with Division 22 relative to tag compliance in the previous year or years?
So we reported that we were out of compliance for providing rate and level for every student in the district in a measurable systemic approach. And so the ODE then asked us for our plan of action, how do we plan to address this? And so our plan of action to address that for last year was to provide tag training for every teacher on campus. And so we did a train-the-trainer model where our central tag department trained the tag facilitators on every campus, and the tag facilitators provided a training for every teacher on campus as, as a starting point. Again, we recognize that that is, that we have to start somewhere. And so when we submitted the sign-in sheets for completion of the tag training on every campus, we then met our corrective action plan.
So I'm going to say a statement that I, I'm looking around, and I don't think anybody was here in 2015 at the, that dais or there, the parents and students were there, but I'm looking at the complaint, or the findings, actually. So the complaint was very thorough and the response was as well, which I appreciated. But on page two, it says in 2015, "PBS submitted a new tag compliance plan." Is that similar to what, not necessarily the content, but it's the same thing that we sent to ODE? Is that what you're referencing in this?
The same format, yes. The same framework that was provided by ODE that was completed in 2015, yes.
So this won't be our first tag compliance plan, but it says here, the school board, and again, present company accepted, since we had changeover, never approved it, funded it, and PBS never implemented it. So the difference this time would be, we have a plan, I don't know, is it going to come to the board to, to be approved? And then, I guess, the other question would be the resourcing of it during the next budget cycle?
So the tag plan comes with five articulated goals as a way of addressing the deficits and deficiencies that exist, and we believe that it starts with a comprehensive look at how our students are being taught. So in, in looking at our, at our tag student population, it really comes down to making sure that the, the teaching in the classroom actually works to differentiate for all students in that classroom. But also they might have, they need to have good content. And so working those two together has been a clear focus. The third has been the identification of student populations, and to make sure that when we're assessing students, we're actually able to capture progression growth for that population of students. And ultimately, how does all of that translate into having a plan for each one of those students that we can actually track over time to make sure that those, that the needs of that, of those students are, are being met? So the plan was designed with those five goals in mind.
And just as a governance issue, we wouldn't, the board, the school board would normally approve a compliance plan, but we would weigh in on the budgets that's presented. So does our pla, tag plan contemplate in order to be able to implement it that we have to, that we would, there'd be a proposal in the budget process to fund the district's response?
I think if we want to accelerate work in this area or any other, we would want to make sure that that, those work strands are inclusive in our budget recommendation in the coming spring and balance that against all of our other priorities. The difference is this coming spring, we anticipate a little bit more of an infusion, so how can we move forward in some of these areas where the district hasn't had the capacity to the degree that, that, you know, it warrants?
Is there, is there a resource plan, say, resource the plan, work the plan, is there a resource plan contemplated? Is there a resource plan contemplated that, in order to implement it?
So, yes, and partially. So, this year, our current tag budget is $1,185,000. And to, and that amount will help us incrementally move to these goals.
Can you give some, can you give some context for that number? What was it the previous year?
I have that in the first response. Sorry, let me pull that up. I have that here. So, previous, so that's level funding essentially from last year.
You're thinking of the year before, if you're looking for that.
It's, on page four of the Step One complaint is the chart with that, tag funding.
And so, I think some of these strategies outlined in your three-year plan are addressed by other more systemic improvements, like the guaranteed and viable curriculum, and, you know, differentiated instruction that we're working toward across our system, as well as the professional development that you've already invested in. But what is the likelihood of being able to achieve this 5.3-year plan outlined here without additional resources?
I think without additional resources, it will take longer.
So, let's do the inverse of that. How many additional resources would it take to accelerate this? Five years is a long time. And I think it would be helpful to know what the limits are. I mean, there, there are some issues that probably there isn't enough money on the planet to make this an immediate turnaround, because we're talking about professional development for thousands of people. And we're, and we're talking about curriculum, and we're talking about a lot of moving paths, all of which take time. Okay, so, given that, would it be possible to come up with a resource plan or something that would allow us to make the kind of progress that you're contemplating over five years, but do it in three or four?
One of, one of our steps that we've been able to take just recently because of the fundraising efforts here in the school district is we do have a donor who is going to fund some professional development, so we will be able to reach more teachers immediately for differentiated instruction that we wouldn't have been able to do without that. So, that's one start. And I think those fundraising efforts and just in by word of mouth, and, and folks wanting to contribute to gifted and talented students and their instruction, I'm hoping that that will grow as, as we get this plan off and see the success that it brings the donor. So, we're excited about that.
I also think with additional funding, things could be sped up, for example, when we're talking about creating individualized tag plans for every student. So, with additional funding, we could have the resources to pay teachers or tag facilitators extended hours to complete those plans, meet with families, discuss growth. As we're discussing how to shift instructional practices besides direct training for teachers, which again, comes with substitute costs or extended hour costs, we could also invest in TOSSAs or invest in some.
Boosts on the ground in the schools, actually supporting the PLC trainings and working with the GVC to actually create those units at the student level and common assessments. And so, those kinds of, those pieces would be helpful. As it stands right now, we do, teachers do, are compensated for writing individual tag plans. However, the parents must ask for it. So, then there becomes that sometimes stopgap of, of equity, right? The parents that know to ask for them versus the parents that don't. So, that's why in our plan, we feel it's really, would be a benefit to the child's learning if we were able to fund the individual tag plans for all students. And that, I think, would then, you know, with the teachers being very specific with the learning targets and addressing rate and level, I think could make a pretty substantial movement on the needle quickly.
Or such a thing like release time for the tag facilitators to go into classrooms, model lessons, give feedback to her teachers, meet with potential students. So, there are a few options that potentially could increase the attainment of this plan and resources would then pull from other priorities, of course.
There are some other suggestions that were made that are probably cost-free, that could be done presumably relatively quickly. It would, I mean, I'm thinking things like standardized bell schedules so that, so that you could do the walk to, you know, accelerated courses. I'm guessing there would be some resistance on the ground to doing that sort of thing because it would mean doing things differently. But it seems to me there are some, some things that could probably be done in the short term that would not necessarily require an infusion of a significant amount of new money, but could make a difference for, for kids who need acceleration. It would require that the central office exert some centralization.
Just want to double check. When we talk about schedules, we're talking about synchronizing departments to be providing content at the same time of the day. Okay?
I, I don't have a good sense of what the low-hanging fruit is and what is doable because the, even the low-hanging fruit that doesn't cost anything does cost a lot because time is money. I, I don't have a good sense, like, what could be implemented right away and what could be stepped up over time that might cost more money. So, I don't know if you can fill me in as a newcomer?
So, the right, so the right-away thing is really the process in which we are now deeply committed to the guaranteed and viable curriculum and really looking at the unit plans and finding those extension activities and strategies for all of our teachers and all of the content areas. I think that's some low-hanging fruit, definitely. That's not going to cost us anything except that the time we're already spending on developing unit plans and providing the training to teachers and to administrators on the guaranteed and viable curriculum in priority and supporting standards. So, I, that would be something that would be very, that would be something that would be cost-effective and could happen in a timely fashion.
And that's because that work is, is currently happening?
That's right. That's right.
So, what we have before us is consideration of the recommend, staff and superintendent's recommendation, which is whether or not the board should approve this five-point plan. And it is agnostic on the question of resourcing. Fair to say?
Additional resourcing would allow us to accelerate the proposed five-year plan.
I thought we were voting on the complaint. Sorry, what, what resolution is this?
Resolution 5945.
So, it's a five-point plan, but also a five-year plan. And so, there's at least those two dimensions to it.
Can, can I ask a, I was a little confused earlier. So, assuming that we, that we pursue this five-year, five-point plan, is that going to pass muster for the Division 22? Is, is, will, will that allow us to check the box as compliant?
Not immediately, no.
Okay. So, at what point, I mean, is there some point during this five-year period when we would be compliant? Or do we have to wait for the full completion of the five-year plan?
So, to, to mark compliance, we have to have a systemic measurable way to say that we're meeting the rate and level of every student. And because our students are being serviced by classroom teachers, we, we want to make sure that our classroom teachers are provided with the training, that the classroom teachers are provided with the curricular materials and supports, and that our students have individualized plans. So, those would be the three markers that we would want to meet before we would feel comfortable as a system saying that we have put systemic processes in place to.
As well as using the data that we can, you know, get from the MAP scores and different assessments that we already use within the district to look at growth of our talented and gifted students. So, we have that data here in the district now through the MAP assessment. So, some, another way that we can measure that growth as well, to see that we're meeting rate and level.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
Sorry. Go ahead. I've already talked, so go ahead if you.
So, this has been around since before my kids were in school, and they're 30 and 26 right now. So, and being an economist on the one hand, on the other hand, what you're saying is really true across our system, no matter which group of students you pick out. We're building systems where there have been no systems. So, you're in good company. And I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not saying that to diminish what you're bringing, but just, you know, if you've seen what we were talking about in terms of our, our goal-setting and where we are now, this is the challenge for the district across the board with every student.
And one thing I, I would suggest is, this evening, we looked at the different student groups, and I think one noticeable group that was missing that we could track over time with growth and increases would be our tag students.
Absolutely.
Just sort of picking up on Director Bailey's point, because I think it's an important one. I really appreciate the complaint. You know, being a new board member, being able to read through it, it was very thorough. I think it makes it very clear that the district is failing tag students. I also had an opportunity to meet with a number of, of tag parents during the campaign, and I heard about a number of these issues. And I think the district is, is agreeing with that. I mean, from what I read in terms of the response, I mean, we're saying, yes, it's, it's pretty clear we're not meeting the needs of these students. But what Director Bailey said is really important, that as we look at the entire district, and as a board, we need to look at the entire district, but, but as parents, we need to look at the entire district as well. I'm also a parent of a tag student. The, the reality is, is that, and I know most of you were here for this, we are failing students across the board. And I, I want to make sure we don't miss this point, and I want to make sure we're really transparent. The five-year plan is not currently funded. So, in order to even achieve the five-year plan, which I believe most of you think is too slow, for good reason, we're going to need to make some really hard resource decisions in terms of even getting to that. Speeding that up, and I'm going to get to your, to your signs because I, I appreciate them, speeding that up would require even additional resources. And a question that, again, the board needs to answer, but, but I'm going to really put this to all of you in the room as well, is where do those resources come from? And one of the things we need to make sure that they don't do is do harm to other students in the district who we're also failing. And, and that is a really, really challenging question. And I think that all of us, when we talk about these issues, need to be thinking about, it, it is a zero-sum game, and I hate, I hate the fact that it is. But when we're talking about resources, it's a zero-sum game. Now, I am interested that some of the parents are putting up signs about, you know, cluster grouping and, and state subject to acceleration, et cetera. And those don't cost money. They do cost time and resources of staff to figure out how that works. What I, I'll just be really clear right now, I'm going to vote to uphold the superintendent's recommendation in this. What I, what I do hope staff continue to do is work with these parents on what are the things we can do in the short term that might move things forward more quickly? And then, and then also, what are the things we could do to make sure that we are getting into compliance? And even if that's over five years, which is a long time, that's better than being out of compliance, so.
So, to Director Scott's point, how, I, the board is going to need to know for the next budget cycle, how, what kinds of resources you're going to need in order to do even this. Because, yeah, I mean, there's, there's only so much money to go around, and Lord knows, there's endless need out there. So, yeah, we're going to, we're, we're going to be in the hot seat. We're going to have to make some, some difficult decisions. And, and we're going to need, we're going to need help from the staff to figure out what those, you know, the contours of, of those difficult decisions. And I, I mean, I, I'm, I am also going to vote to uphold, and I do think this is, you know, it is a testament to where we are as a district, that, that we're having to come up with a five-year plan that is probably not going to be satisfying to anyone in this room or outside. But we are where we are, and there's a lot going on. I, I think it might be helpful as time goes on to report out, not just to, to us, but to the, you know, to God and everybody, what you're doing in terms of, like, professional development for classroom teachers to advance the cause. You know, the cluster grouping, the, you know, the walk-tos, the, you know, whatever it is that, you know, kind of progress reports so that we all know, we don't have to wait for five years. That stuff is happening.
It's actually a three-year plan that we're looking at for five years. They laid, you've laid it out as a three-year plan, but without an infusion of additional resources, it's going to take longer. So, we will expect progress reporting on, you know, how, how we're chipping away at these. And then, it will also, along with many other things, be a topic for the budget. So, I'm going to call this, call us to a vote.
I have something I want to say. Sorry, I'm just going to explain my vote. So, I'm going to support the, uphold the superintendent's recommendation, but this has been going on a long time. So, when I was on the board in the early 2000s, the creation of access was one way to address the lack of services to a specifically targeted group of access of tag students. And there hasn't been a lot of progress made since then. So, I guess I'm looking, going to support it, the superintendent, with like two, two caveats. One is that I'm going to expect in the budget process that we have the resources, because a plan without, that's not resourced, isn't really a plan. And then, second, I think there's just a missing piece here is the equity piece. So, the plan, I, I don't see any data in here that talks about how our different groups have their tags. Not a lot, just.
Go ahead, Sam.
In terms of identification, and, or, you know, what the disaggregated students who are getting the individual education plans. Because, I mean, frankly, I didn't, I had a tag, one of my three kids is a tag student, but I never knew that you could ask for a plan. So, I'm just wondering, just in terms of the equity, of who knows that you could ask for that? And then, the information about the AP, IB, and dual credit, I think while we have it at all, we have a variation at all schools, it's not the same, and it's not equitably accessible. So if you're at Madison, there's a lot fewer AP classes than there are in some other, in some others' high schools. So, just because we have some, if that's how we're saying we're meeting some of that, the tag students need for, you know, rate and level, or that would be level instruction, I think we still have a gap that exists. And same thing with the under-enrolled K8s. I think we still have some gaps in what's, it's not consistently applied. So, as we look at how we resource the plan, that's like another element that I'd want to just see fully fleshed out.
One last comment.
And getting back to our goal discussion, this is one more reason not to just sit, if you're over the benchmark, that we need to look at the full spectrum. Did that make sense?
Progress for all students.
Yeah, and not just, oh, we don't have to worry about you if you're meeting benchmarks.
Absolutely.
Just to clarify our commitments, I do want to thank the families who have been persistent and patient for a long time in this area. I think, as the educational leader for the district, want to see every one of our students realize their full potential. And we're also stretching the organizational capacity to cover work across a lot of different fronts, starting with the building of a core curriculum and a set of consistent instructional practices that hopefully are able to be sort of more targeted in their universalism. And that's been a heavy lift, no less urgent to make sure we meet the rate and level needs of our kids. But I feel the same urgency for the need to make sure our practices are culturally responsive to our Black and African-American students who are at 12% proficiency. I need our students to, our educators, to practice and integrate differentiation and universal design for our students with disabilities at 29% proficiency in fifth grade. I need them to know how to, to have some foundational understandings about language acquisition for those that are learning to speak English, who are performing at 17% proficiency in fifth grade also. So we are trying to balance all those needs. We're talking about the same set of teachers and craft a professional development plan that tries to get at some of these areas. I do agree that as we go about our pedagogical models, that there are opportunities there, like mixed ability grouping or some differentiation viability. That is something we're trying to do in our primary grades, for sure. So, we can certainly continue to take a hard look at many of the things that are suggested here, for sure, and see where we can integrate some of these practices, not as distinct to tag students, but ways to continue to keep the curriculum open-ended, to meet the more personalized needs of our students. But we'll be balancing this coming spring a whole host of these areas to try to propose a budget recommendation that makes an installment of investment along a lot of different fronts, where we want to make progress. So, we're going to continue to see what we can do in the interim, and see what we can come back and reasonably propose a few months from now.
Thank you very much. The board will now vote on Resolution 5945. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5945 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Latrell absent. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are going to jump back on our agenda to the discussion on the referral of our local option levy. Sorry for the delay for those of you who are here with us on this item. Tonight, the board will vote to refer to renew the local option levy for the November ballot. The PPS local option levy was passed in 2014 by more than 70% of the voters. It was originally intended to support 642 teaching positions. In reality, each year, it has been able to fund more than 750 positions. For the 2019-2020 school year, the renewal is anticipated to raise approximately $96.9 million and fund an estimated 800 teaching positions. The Board of Education is considering referring a renewal of the current levy at the existing rate, $1.99 per thousand of assessed property value. This means that the tax rate will continue to be the same if it is approved by our voters in May. The board has had discussion to hear from many stakeholders, such as the Portland Association of Teachers, principals, parents, Portland Council, PTA, and community partners at our last August 6th meeting, and previously has had two other board discussions. Superintendent, do you want to have any brief staff introduction of this item?
Yeah, brief staff introduction of this item. We have our CFO, Cynthia Lay, and our budget director, Jordan Eli.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Member of the Board, Superintendent. I am here tonight, in front of you, respectfully asking you to approve the Resolution Number 5944 to refer the renewal of local option levy to voters to be considered for the November 2019 general election, and to maintain the rate of $1.99 per $1,000 assessed property value. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I'd like to put the motion on the table for Resolution 5944, calling for a five-year local option levy to support our teachers and schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Brim Edwards moves.
Second.
Director Moore beat Director Scott to the punch on that one. Ms. Huff, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 5944?
No.
All right, we had some good citizen comment at our last meeting. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Director Moore?
So, I'm in favor. I did have a couple of, a couple of questions slash suggestions. And I guess the first is the title.
I want to make sure to draw the board's attention to the revised resolution and recitals.
And so maybe, just, yeah, may I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Or request? It might be worthwhile for us, we have a revised version that has some perfecting amendments in the actual ballot language. Can we potentially have a motion to adopt the amendment so that our discussion is on the technically perfected?
Perfected?
The technically perfected version. Would you allow me to do that before you jump in?
Thank you.
So if you take the revised, what I'm moving is you take the revised resolution, which I don't have in front of me, but it has some, double, everybody's so helpful. The revised version, it has a series of, of tract changes in it. And I'm happy to walk through them. In Exhibit A, in the summary, the word "projected" is put in place of "estimated." On the third bullet, there is a restructuring of the sentence.
Excuse me, can you, I can't, I don't, I'm not seeing the tract. Oh, yes, there it is, okay.
You have to go deep into it. So it's not to the resolution, it's to the actual exhibit we would, that would be submitted to the voters in the pamphlet. And then there is a change, some stylistic changes, and then a clarification about the auditing. And then there, in, there's a duplicative sentence that, it's just a repeat of what's said earlier, so we're striking that. And there is also, in the paragraph relating to the financial audit, a change as well. But there are technical changes and some just grammatical changes that felt were needed. One thing that we're confined by is there is a word limit in each of these sections. So, part of it was to also make sure that we stayed within, so sometimes we just made things crisper, so that we stayed within...
Do we need a motion to put this substitute in?
I was just going to do that, but go ahead, and I'll second it.
Motion to put this substitute on the table.
Second.
Now, back to Director Moore. Thank you.
Do you want us to vote on that?
Yes, let's vote up.
So, is there any discussion that we just going to have?
On this particular amendment? Or on this revised?
I'm just trying to get the revised version before the board, so that we...
Right, so having a motion and a second puts it before the board for discussion. And now there's discussion to vote on that amendment?
Which encompasses the underlying resolution itself, so it's...
It's fine, is there any discussion on the...
The changes.
The changes.
No. No.
So now is the time to be discussion on those changes before the vote on the amendment of the original resolution.
Okay, so hearing none?
No, you're going to hear some.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay.
On the changes themselves?
On the changes themselves.
Okay.
Um, well, some of, okay, some of them are on the, what was, what we were originally had, some of them are on the revisions. But it's on this document that we have in front of us labeled revised.
Right, so, the motion to amend the original resolution is only about the changes? So, there are lots of ways to get where we want to go.
But, once we, assuming we approve the amendment, then we can have a full discussion about the amended resolution, which will...
That's fine.
Create an opportunity for you to bring all your concerns forth.
That's fine as well.
So, I have a motion and a second on the amendment before us for this revised referral on the ballot levy. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This revised amended resolution is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Now, do we have board discussion on this amended resolution?
Okay.
Yes. Take it away.
Okay, so I want to start with the title of the, of the ballot measure, levy renewal to maintain teaching positions and classroom supports. In the past, we have had, I think, two levies that were exclusively for teachers. That were, the levies were explicitly to support certificated teachers. And I think, I guess I'd like to ask what the benefit of adding classroom supports is? Because I think it could lead to, it could unnecessarily complicate the discussion of the levy. So can somebody explain to me how we got there?
Sure. So we had language before us at the public hearing in which it said, "teaching positions and educational programs," which we had, I guess there wasn't any questions about that. It became classroom supports as, I guess, a discussion, that apparently happened with a discussion between staff and some board members. But I'm going to speak to whether it's classroom supports or educational programs. And I'm going to start with the underlying, one underlying fact, which we say in here, that we're going to maintain the, I don't know which of the five...
Level of teaching positions.
The average level of teaching positions, which is 825. So, I think we're pretty clear that 825 teaching positions.
Well, I have a question about that too, but go ahead.
Okay, so it seemed clear, so if it's not, that's how I read the...
Well, I think it's clear. I mean, if we're talking about the number, I get nervous when, that's a pretty high number. And it's based on the history of this levy over the course of an unprecedented growth in real estate value, and therefore, really extraordinary revenues. If, God forbid, we get another recession over the next five years, which I think is not impossible, I worry that we're setting the bar very, very high. And I worry that if revenues decline, we're not going to be able to meet the number. You know, better to under-promise and over-deliver than over-promise and under-deliver. And so, can we write it down the number?
I actually agree with you, but that was just apparent ethical to my getting to your answer. Because I thought it would, I'm more comfortable with 800, which is a, but I could go...
Still a pretty big number.
Yeah, but I could still go lower. But I was just, I guess, saying, at some point, we're establishing some sort of baseline, right? And then I thought about the conversations we've been having about doing things radically differently in setting our district goals and serving students who hadn't, haven't been served well by the district. And because we haven't got to the part of the conversation with, and it's actually going to be something the superintendent comes to us with, around what the strategies are to do things differently, and for our students, and whether it's culturally specific supports in the classroom, supports for English language learners, it could be academic intervention specialists, it could be behavioral and mental health staff, career technical education instructors, early education teachers. It could be a whole host of things, some of them who are teachers, and some of them who may have other professional certifications. And I guess, from my viewpoint, by exclusively just saying they're going to be classified teachers, may close off some options that in the out-years, so five years down the road, were a long way down the road. And some things, you know, may not be classroom teachers, but they may be the things that make a difference for our students. And I say, maybe culturally specific supports that happen in the classroom. And I want to allow for people to have that in their thinking when they're going to, when they're voting for this, that it's not, that that's not just our only strategy is teachers. So, that's the thinking.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to make it, I'm going to point out a technical issue. So we have, again, in this, in the summary, a sentence saying, "No levy funds will be spent for administration."
On page four.
Page four of the, of the revised thing, it's in the summary. Okay, so this is, that's a sentence that has occurred in the last two levies. And, and we ran into trouble in the first one, the first levy that was passed that had that language. Because we, we didn't really have accounting procedures where we could guarantee, we could say, you know, no money, zero dollars were spent on administration.
There's not a code that says administration?
No, there isn't. But I mean, we came up with an administrative, with an accounting mechanism. So that, so that we can now say with absolute certainty to the voters, when we say no administrative costs, we mean no administrative costs goes for teachers, okay? My worry is if we start talking about other things, if we start talking about programs or classroom supports that may or may not be delivered by certificated teachers. They may be using, you know, contracted services or something. We probably have to take out that sentence because we're not, probably not going to be able to guarantee that zero dollars would be going for administrative costs. And it just, I mean, it's that kind of thing that I, I think is, it makes it unnecessarily complicated. And, and that's what I worry about. Did that make any sense?
It did. I'd like to ask our budget team to weigh in on that question. If you're willing to do so.
And I'm making a deal out of this because it was a deal. For the first levy, it was a deal.
Okay, so the process that we currently follow with the levy.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Sorry.
Thank you. It's okay.
Jordan Ely, Director of Budget and Analysis. The process that we currently use for the levy is at the end of the fiscal year, we calculate the average experienced cost of teachers. And then we take the actual received revenue. We take the revenue divided by that average cost of a teacher. And we come up with the number of FTE that we journal onto the levy. So that's the, that accounting practice that you talked about. So we can say that 100% of the levy gets used to pay for teacher costs. That being said, the levy does go into the general fund. It is an unrestricted resource in the general fund. So it's, it's helpful to have language that clearly indicates the board's intent for these funds.
The calculation, I'm sorry, the calculation is being done in May and been reviewed by the CBRC. And then once again, at the end of the fiscal year, when we close the books, then we will true up with the last two months of actual information for teachers' costs.
Just to add to this, because I hear your point, Director Moore, but it is, it is, it's a very solvable problem under, under Oregon budget law. And I think the way, it sounds like staff's doing it by essentially billing to the levy costs. We can be very clear that we're not billing administration costs to the levy funds. And I think, and I think meet this, our auditors would, would be able to second that and say, absolutely.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I mean, the way we've currently set it up, yeah, it's, it's not a problem.
But even under a new system.
But if we, but if we set it up so that we might be supporting, you know, I don't know, CBOs delivering services, which I think was one, you know, part of that would probably, you know, if we pay that contract, some of that money would be going probably to overhead for the CBOs. I mean, I just.
Yeah, and I think it is something that.
I'm being nitpicky here because.
And I hear you.
Because we need to be nitpicky.
And because we're, because we're saying no, we do need to be careful. But I also think that is something that from a, from a financial standpoint, because we're billing to the levy, we can be very clear to back out any administrative costs that would be, that would be questioned by anyone. And our independent outside auditors will, will, will be able to back that up. So I, I hear what you're saying. We need to be careful. But I'm also really confident that, that this is easily doable.
Thank you, Director Scott. And Director Moore, I reassure you that through our accounting system, we will have coding mechanism that we will be able to code certain expenditures so that we can call out what, what part of the budget, what part of the actual expenditures being spent on the local option levy.
And then I'll just add to that, that we actually do have a code for administrators. So anybody that wants to see how much we spend on administrators, the code would be five because it's an expenditure and then 114. So any codes in our accounting system that start with five, 114, under the object is administration. I don't expect people in the community to open up our budget book and figure that out on their own. But I am happy to answer that question for anybody that would like to know.
And furthermore, we welcome the community to come and review the information with us, so at any time.
What I'm hearing is there's absolutely nothing preventing us from validating that every dollar of collected levy funds goes to teaching positions.
Yes, that is correct statement.
And to your point about the community validating, part of the oversight structure for our levies is the Community Budget Review Committee on which Director Moore sat for many years. Hence the interest and experience on this particular issue. But they are charged with the oversight of the levy funds annually.
That is correct.
And the other thing, if I can just, you mentioned a recession, because I do think that that's an important point as, as we look at these things. It would, it would take a, what's happened over the last few years with growth in real market value versus assessed value and the taxes on assessed value, it would take a really, really significant recession to bring those real market values back down. Now, we saw that in 2008, so nothing's impossible. But I also think it's really important that we give voters the best estimate of the revenue we're going to raise. Because, yeah, we could go to war, we could have, you know, a massive, you know, earthquake. I mean, all kinds of things could happen that would throw that into question. These though are conservative, but, you know, good estimates about the type of revenue that would come in. And frankly, I'm really comfortable that it would take a really, really massive recession. And frankly, at that point, I'm also comfortable going back to the voters and saying, you know, we did not expect the nine point oh earthquake when we passed this. And I think it's better, we could go out there with an estimate that's half this and say, just in case, you know, it might be lower, but I think it's better to go out with a realistic estimate of what it'll raise.
I was curious if we had, you were asking about the recession or, you know, questioning what would happen in that scenario. And, you know, going back to previous levies, do we have data about how many teachers average were, were hired during those periods? Two thousand and six in particular?
It was much lower. It's gone up quite a bit. I think the last one, we were estimating six hundred and we've gone all the way up to eight hundred roughly.
Yeah, eight seventy last year.
And that's, that's because property values have just shot up.
In addition to the allowable increase under the cap. So I'm just curious, what happened in 2017, 18 that we actually dipped below eight hundred?
So that, that is actually based on the actual cost of the teachers. If you look at how much revenue we collected that year, we collected more revenue than the year before. But each teaching position on average costed more. And so the actual FTE funded by the levy that year was lower.
And the, to put in layperson's terms, paraphrasing what Deputy Superintendent Hertz has said before, is that your office is estimating just about a wash in terms of the growth of our assessed property tax base and the growth in costs and benefits, obviously, per, per teacher.
That is correct.
Three percent.
I think it's important for the board to note that when we look at the revenue growth over time, I've heard it talked about tonight, how we've seen an extraordinary growth. The growth in assessed value is actually capped. And so that growth is not primarily driven by the assessed value growth. It's actually driven by our collection rate or a reduction in our delinquency rate. So when we make estimates of how many teaching positions we can pay for and how much revenue we expect to collect, we're, we also, we're not just predicting what the assessed value growth is. We're also looking at what we think our collection rate is going to be. And I think it's important for the community to know that we have estimated a flat collection rate. So we're not, over the past few years, we have seen the collection rate go up or the delinquency rate go down. And now we're projecting, we saw between last year and this year that it kind of stabilized. And so now we're saying, going forward, we expect that to stabilize and, and not to have a reduction in the delinquency rate. So there's a lot of assumptions that go into these numbers.
Translation, you consider this a fairly conservative.
Oh, very conservative, yes.
So I'm sorry, I'm just to ask a question about the delinquency rate. So I'm interested what, what it is. And then does our, do we see a huge spike in the, we, the tax, all the tax collecting entities see spike in the delinquency in 2008 and following that?
And it's continued to fall since then.
Right.
With a precipitous drop starting in the 15, 16 fiscal year.
And it has been flat since then.
Since 15, 16?
Since 16, 17.
16, 17. So we're predicting, we're continuing on a three-year. And if we had that big recession.
That's correct.
It would, we might be able to look at the previous years and know what that might look like.
Yeah, so when we talk about those what-if scenarios, that's really what would cause me more concern. As Director Scott said, we would have to have a pretty incredible recession for real market values to drop far enough to affect the assessed value. So it really would be the delinquency rate that we're concerned about.
Right.
I think we also have to consider if we are going to change the length of the school year or the length of the school day. If we did that by, I'm gonna throw out 10% as a number, that would essentially reduce the number of teaching positions supported by 10%, which is 80. So that's something to think about when we're throwing numbers around here. I, I'm gonna agree with Director Moore. I would prefer to see this dedicated strictly to teachers. I think if we're gonna specify a minimum number like eight hundred, we're looking at such a marginal piece that might be non-teachers. Why are we making it complicated? And we can fund that out of other sources. We can still go out and talk about the strategies that we're employing to improve achievement. But certainly one of those strategies is funding teachers.
Being a new board member, there's pieces of this culturally that I don't understand. But for me, what I'm, what I'm hearing in the shift is that the narrative has been classroom teachers. And this is really about looking at our goals and trying to invest in teachers that will help us do some of the differentiation. Some of the things the tax parents were just asking us for, some of the things we know will be essential to meet our goals. So that, my understanding is all of this will be for direct instructional staff for students. They just might not be single classroom teachers. And is that, I mean, that's the piece.
Well, that is unclear. And in fact, there were, there were some examples listed that were not direct instruction. And I think we would just make our campaign a lot easier if we just said, teachers, certified teachers. And we're, I mean, we're arguing about this much really in terms of expenditure. And this is a way just to make it a lot cleaner, both in terms of accounting. We don't have to worry about any of the, oh, making sure there's no administration involved. It just cuts to the chase. We already have established procedures.
And I'm wondering, we already have established procedures, this is what we've done before, and yet we're expecting different outcomes. And so where is that line between holding that trust with the public and being clear and also giving ourselves the freedom to innovate?
See, I'm, I'm, we have plenty of freedom to innovate. This is 70 million out of, or excuse me, 90 million plus out of a 700 million plus budget. There's no constraints here. There's no constraints. This is about making things simple out on the campaign trail. And, and when I said established procedures, I meant around accounting. Again, we, we're just talking about changing how we do things. That's a different discussion from, from this.
I, I think everything that we're talking about can peacefully coexist here. I think we have the accounting procedures in place to make sure that we have fidelity to the language that we're putting before the voters without question, and that's been continually vetted externally. But I think the superintendent has also messaged that a modicum of flexibility in how we serve our students' needs in the classroom could be useful. We could, we could change the language either way and still have it be accurate and still have it represent the strategy. It's just a question of, you know, what do we want to message to the public? Superintendent, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think as I stated earlier, I mean, I think we could say legitimately, every dollar would go to a certificated teacher. And teachers serve in different capacities in different ways within school communities. But they're providing direct service to, to students. So all I wanted to hear is, and I have, I haven't not heard it, some assurance is that as we go into our budget development, that the strategies we'll be proposing will require us to dedicate all of our other resources to making sure that we're resourcing and funding the kind of student supports like reading specialists and, and other ways to make the kinds of gains that I think we all want to see possible. Because if we don't resource them, we won't.
So the current, the current levy funds, reading specialists, for example?
Certificated teaching staff. They're providing direct service to students.
Director Moore and I are both CBRC alum. And so we've been whispering over here about page four and page six. Both have statements. Page four, it's the fourth paragraph down. It says, funds will be placed in a subaccount. And then on page six, it's the second bullet point that says funds will be placed in a subaccount. And that didn't sound like the process you had described, so I'm, I, there was a little confusion here about the difference there.
Certainly. Just so that we can really capture the dollar received for local option levy, we created a fund called Fund 102, separate from Fund 101, which is general fund. They're all general fund, but we extract them differently so we can easily call out how much we receive for local option funds. This is just accounting, but we even take a step further so we can segregate what's regular dollars for general fund versus what is for local option levy. We also have internal control in place where we review the work, where we see, to make sure that the receipt we received from the county is being properly coded. So there are other things that we do in the background.
So that subfund is the front end, and then what you were describing is the back end.
Correct, yeah.
And subfund is probably a better.
Right, right. Subfund is a revenue and where the, the general entry we're talking about is the expenditures.
So it's a separate fund. I don't even know what a subfund or a subaccount is.
So when we present our budget to you.
It's like a line item under the, yes.
We have the general fund that gets presented to you, Fund 100. And then this fund exists within that fund. So it has a parent. It's, it's, it's still part of the general fund, but we create a subfund so that we can pull those resources out away from our state and local property taxes.
I understood it to be a separate fund in the sense that it has its own number back in the.
It does have its own number.
For revenue purposes, correct.
Thank you. That's, that's what I thought it was, so I feel better now.
Thank you for the question.
I, I still have, I, I am still concerned if we're gonna have that line in there saying, nothing for administration. It's, you know, if we're contemplating using this money for something other than teachers, that makes me, I, I think we're leaving ourselves open to unnecessary questions and confusion.
I thought I just heard Guadalupe say that this will only be used for certificated teachers.
In the classroom.
Well, then.
Then let's just say that in the title.
So, so have that be the title, and then you can wax poetic in the summary about all the ways you can use certificated teachers.
Well, are you? I'm concerned that if we don't specifically talk about ways in which we're going, going to help our students who haven't been served in specific ways, then. then when we get to the budget, it will be the understanding, it will be potentially the, the community's thinking that it's gonna go to just classroom teachers. And that's what we currently have, and that's, hasn't-
That's incorrect. It's not just classroom teachers.
We current, so we currently have just teachers, and I think there's other, potentially other ways that we might wanna support our, our students.
I'm also in favor of supporting, of this language change for that reason, because the students that we aren't currently serving may be better served by having a reading specialist, for instance.
A reading specialist is a teacher. And, and that's already, we're already-
And I'm also confused about why, I don't understand the nuances in the language. What we currently have are, in the bond language, or the levy language rather, are, are teachers, only teachers. And right now, we're, we're suggesting adding reading specialists, and how, how are they different?
Would there be anything in the language preventing us from assigning two teachers to a classroom and still meet the spirit of the levy?
No.
Okay.
So I think we're dwelling in semantics here, and I think what the superintendent has said is that any sort of certificated teachers can serve the strategies that you're envisioning for classroom supports. And we do have some concern over the ambiguity of some of the language here. And I'm asking the superintendent if you would feel hamstrung in any way if our levy just spoke to teachers? And would you still have the flexibility you need to drive the strategies you think?
In the way that we've described it, there would be flexibility to use the levy to fund teachers. However, we use those to provide direct service to students. We have other resources where I'm, I'm counting on that we be able to fund all of the other interventions and supports where we wanna see movement for our student subgroups.
So those strategies would be prioritized in your, in your budget?
And some of them, I'm guessing, will involve teachers? So-
But the language doesn't prevent you, wouldn't prevent you from also having, the current language doesn't prevent you from having any of the same flexibility, correct?
Right. So I'm thinking of models I've implemented before. Let's say there's four third-grade classrooms, but I assign them a fifth-wheel teacher who goes room to room, providing direct services to students, co-teaching with those homeroom teachers. So we're still funding teachers, they're providing direct intervention and teaching to our students. There's enough flexibility in teaching positions.
Okay, here's the problem I have with the title. Classroom supports. So right now it says, "Teaching positions and classroom supports." Okay, many of the classroom supports can be teachers, but many of them may not be teachers. I mean, things that are called classroom supports may not be teachers, okay? So my concern is when we're trying to sell this to the electorate, I think it's important that they know what they're buying. And that they're buying teachers who may, who fulfill many, many diverse roles within the district. You know, mostly in classrooms, but not only, and, but they're still teachers. And it, I, I, it just, it just feels to me like we are injecting a level of ambiguity that is both unnecessary and unhelpful.
So given, given the confusion as we've talked about it, I, I, I'm, I'm tempted to say yes. Maybe the simplest message since we're all gonna be out there is, is, it's just for teachers. So I would like to make an amendment to so, go ahead and just sort of limit it back to teachers, but it feels like that's an amendment that needs to be made in, in at least two or three different places in the resolution. Am I remembering timeline? We have to, to vote on this tonight? Okay. So being a new board member, maybe I'll turn to our attorney and just ask, is there a process where we can, like recess for five minutes to figure that language out?
Not in a quorum. So if you'd like to consult my staff, okay.
Of course, where you can figure it out.
Oh, sorry.
We were volunteering you.
Sorry, I, I missed that really critical point. I'm happy, happy to take direction from the board and come back with proposed language. I wonder if there are other, are there other issues besides this one?
Good point, right. Are there, yeah.
So I'm just gonna say, I don't support taking out classroom supports, 'cause I think it gives us additional flexibility to help supporting students, and we don't know what is gonna be out there in the future, so if it's taken out, I'm, I'm not supportive of that. And I think we have research that shows that voters will support what we have before them, and that a big priority for them is support for struggling students. So I, just, if we take it out, I'm not gonna be supportive of that, and I think-
Even though, just to be clear, the superintendent has said that he'll be able to do everything that we're talking about needing to do if the language is limited to teachers.
And he's also said he would be, can do everything he wants to do with the current language.
So what are we getting by keeping the language in again?
I think additional flexibility.
But, but I, I mean, I literally, concretely, I'm just trying to get at, what, what is it we will get by keeping the language that we lose if we take the language out? 'Cause what I'm getting the sense of here is what we gain by taking the language out is clarity in terms of, of a message to voters, but we're not losing anything substantively. If there's something we're losing, so like, if there is a specific expenditure or, or practice or something that we won't be able to fund, I guess I'm, I'm curious as to what, what that is.
So one thing, I'll just go back to the testimony that we had at the public hearing the other night, where there was a focus on class size reduction or lowering class size, and I think there will be an expectation, if we just say teachers, it will be translated to classroom teachers. And this, when we say we're gonna maintain the teachers, that means we're gonna maintain the class size, and that's, this is given-
You actually say that in the summary. Bullet point number two is help maintain class sizes. So if you don't wanna say that-
It's one of the things, but I think if it's, if, if we're only doing teachers, it's the only thing, and I think it's, the superintendent related earlier that class size strategy was not a primary strategy to increase, drive student achievement.
Okay, so, so on page four, in the summary, second paragraph, "This renewed local option levy would continue to fund teaching positions too. One, support a well-rounded education including career and technical programs and enrichments and electives for all students. Two, help maintain class sizes. Three, provide supports such as reading specialists for struggling students." I'm fine with those three bullet points.
Thank you, I helped write that.
They're great. Okay, but you, you don't need, in the title, the, the term "classroom supports," which I think is subject to, I, I, I mean, I think it injects a level of ambiguity that is not gonna be helpful. You can still talk about supports. We can, I mean, we could wax poetic.
I expect us to talk, do more than talk about it, and to me, it's an indication to the community that it's, it's about more than what we're currently doing. So, but we can, we can agree to disagree.
I'm going to call the question on the underlying resolution. I think this has been a conversation really worth having, because we brought forward the most important issues about this campaign. I think the divergent perspectives are all covered by what we wanna do here together. I think we all believe that we need a lot of different roles to come to the aid of our students in this really important work that we're embarking on, especially for our students that we have been failing. I think the superintendent has identified a wide range of strategies. I think it's clear that the levy will fund predominantly teachers in service to that, as it has in the past. And I think with the modest addition of the language here, we're going to convey to the public, maybe we, we would already have the flexibility without it, but we're going to convey to the public that we have an interest in investing in a, a range of strategies in service to our kids. Does that suit your needs?
I, I disagree with that interpretation.
All right.
I don't think it conveys that.
It clearly conveys that the dominant investment from the levy is certified teaching positions. We have a minimum threshold of teachers, but-
It says eight, 825, I mean.
And it, and classroom supports means that what the levy supports takes place in our classroom. It's not strategies in the central office. It's classroom supports.
I, I have a question and a comment. The question is, have we done polling on the, on this language? Do we have an idea how well or not the language is received? But also, just from a personal perspective, we were presented with statistics about the voter turnout and the percentage, the win rates that were compelling when I heard them, and they were in the high 60s, early 70s consistently. You know, Portlanders love education and are willing to tax themselves to, to get to these goals. And, and I was influenced by those statistics. They were high, they were in the high 60s, low 70s, and, and they impacted me, and it impacted my, my own decision.
So we have done research.
To be in support of this.
The language that was surveyed was the teaching positions and educational programs. So when we change, I mean, classroom supports, I think was felt to be more specific than educational programs. But yes, and we're well-positioned, assuming we have it on the ballot.
I mean, any kid, any, any parent that's had a struggling kid is not gonna mind that language.
I was just gonna say.
Assuming we bring this conversation to conclusion.
I'm sorry.
I was saying, any parent of a kid who's struggled is not gonna mind the language about classroom supports, because you're gonna wanna see more classroom supports if you have a kid that is failing.
Would Director Bailey and Director Moore feel more comfortable if it said classroom support staff?
Okay, I, I have, I have not seen the polling data, so I don't know what it says. If, if you're basing the decision based on survey results that the rest of us haven't seen, then, okay. I, I still think it is gonna complicate it, but, okay, whatever.
The board will now vote on Resolution 59. Oh, excuse me, I didn't see that Director DePass had.
We had a request from a director to take a couple of minutes to look at some alternative.
I didn't hear that.
No, no, I mean, but it wasn't secondary or anything, so I think the conversation will-
Let's take a three-minute recess until Director DePass returns, and then we'll, but we will not-
Can I ask a question in the meantime?
Yes.
Okay.
We are not on recess yet.
I'm gonna, so we're voting on this, and in order to submit it as ballot language.
Correct.
Okay, so am I correct in assuming that once we vote on this, we cannot make any changes?
This is the language of the referral. Actually, yes, we will not, no one can discuss this issue while we're at recess, we'll just wait till Director DePass returns, three-minute recess.
A quorum can't.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 5944. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5877 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Lateral absent. I just wanna close that conversation by saying, I think it was healthy to have a robust conversation around the language there. I also think that we are very much united in what we want to do here and what we're all committed to doing together. I think we're also united in supporting a variety of strategies. I think, again, I appreciate Director Moore, you bringing the conversation forward so that we had some more critical dialogue on it. I think it's helpful, I think it helps us make better decisions. And we're now, as citizens, all engaged in this process of communicating to the voters about it and making sure that we get this passed. So thank you for that robust discussion.
I agree, this was a tactical discussion. This was a tactical discussion. I'm ready, as usual, to go out and with the rest of you, work our rears off to get this passed.
And on that note, I would like to thank you, in particular Director Bailey, for your early footwork that you have been doing to get us to this point of referral. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Given the late-ish hour, I'm going to suspend our discussion of our board governance structure until our next meeting, and we'll be in conversation with each of you around that. And we will proceed to our business agenda. We did not have any items pulled from the business agenda, but Director Brim Edwards, you had something that you wanted to raise.
Yikes, and I wasn't ready for this because I was thinking there was a whole other discussion between that.
There you go. Here it is.
So thank you. Do we, do you want to move the business agenda first and get it before us?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Scott, seconded by Director Brim Edwards. Is how far there are any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the business agenda?
No.
All right. Board discussion.
So I just wanted to raise one issue, and this is in the context of continuous improvement work that's underway with our contracting process, especially those contracts that impact our students in a very positive way. And I think we heard some of that tonight in the public comment around our long relationship with SEI. On the front of the contracting process, we have a really robust system of initial contract review, and I think that's been developed by hard work of the staff, working with the board members and also the audit committee.
Persistent board agitation over time.
Yeah, and I think we've nailed it. I think that when Secretary of State looked at the front end, we really have a great system in place. The district's also committed to monitoring the quality of the services provided and implying the valuation of a performance tool in there, and that the district will evaluate the deliverables against the expected outcome. We have, and I'm going to talk about this in the next agenda item when we talk, get to the committee's agenda, but the independent performance auditor will start, will be starting an audit of our contracting process, which will support our ongoing continuous improvement and transparency with a goal of assessing how our contracts support our students. So tonight in the business agenda, we have a host of contracts that impact our students that fit within that sort of narrower band that I think we all want to see the most, the sort of efficacy in terms of supporting our students. It's worth noting that in addition to all the work that's happened on the front end, there's a new template for the board for contracts where staff is asking for advanced authorization, and that's just new from two weeks ago. We have a security contract that has an explanation of that. So thanks to the staff for sort of turning around really quickly, an advanced, a new template for when they're asking for advanced authorization. That's where we're going to be approving a contract when we actually haven't seen the contract yet. So just best practice to have a process by which what contracts are allowed to move forward with advanced authorization. There's also a new template for each of the contracts now, and they are, I think, just called the board cover memo, something with the title, and we had about, I don't know, eight to 10 of those this last week. And that cover memo highlights why direct negotiation or the RFP process was used. It summarizes data and outcomes for the prior, supposed to summarize data and outcomes for the prior year, and describes any change from prior year scope, the new deliverables or plan for improvement. So I read through, so I really appreciate staff doing that because it's a new piece, I think, to this sort of continuous improvement that we have underway. So I read through all of them and then also the supporting data. And as a further process improvement and just thinking through that it's a new template, I want to ask that the superintendent that we receive for the contracts that we are going to be approving tonight, and I'm going to be supportive of all of them, but that we have board cover memos that are revised so that they reflect the staff's assessment of last year's sort of goal attainment, and then where there were any places where the goals weren't attained, what action staff has taken if we're looking at a renewal. And these are all for renewals, if it's a renewal, if there wasn't attainment of the goals, whether the goal needs to be revised or a different strategy so that we're getting this continuous improvement in the goal. So as I look through them, I noted we probably could, staff would benefit anytime you have a new process of having additional guidance from you, the new chief of, I'm going to get this right, of systems performance, and the deputy superintendent of business operations, and our contract managers so that they have a sense of when they're filling out the template that we're, got the information the board needs in order to be able to make the, assess as we proceed with voting on a renewal.
I think this is part of our journey that we've been on in terms of improving our contracting practices, and I think one of the other benefits of having a little bit more of a descriptive assessment from staff is that it helps us to compare like contracts to one another, which is hard to do right now because most of the information that comes forward to us is the direct account of performance from the contractor themselves. And so that's why I think a little bit more of that uniform internal assessment would be helpful.
Yeah, and I should just make clear, this isn't a comment on the contractors or the providers that are providing services to our students. It's really about us creating a system, just like we did on the front end of the contracts, so creating on the back end so that we have oversight, so we're able to really see, you know, which strategies and services are providing the gravest efficacy, and if we aren't getting the outcomes, to ask why and to create this continuous improvement cycle. But I say, I think we have the right template now. It's just going to be, it's a new muscle we're going to need to be exercising, and I think the ones that were submitted tonight could use additional guidance on being able to provide clearly for the board what the goals were, how the performance, the performance to the goals, and then what, what, if anything, is being recommended for the coming year. And again, this is not a substitute for voting on the contracts tonight, and as Director Constance said, it's less about, we hear from the contractors, here's how we, here's the data, here's how we feel about our performance, but it's really getting that critical eye, and not critical, that's probably the wrong word, getting that, the district to focus on our assessment of that, and are there any changes we need to make, or do we need to be doubling down or expanding to other schools? So that's, I would just request that we have that, and I think then also we'll be in good shape as we head into the, I'm sure there's going to be more contracts coming through the pipeline.
So just to clarify, Director Brim Edwards, you want to see cover memos in the way that you described them for all of the contracts on tonight's business agenda, or not the transportation facilities ones, but the others?
No, it's just, it's a revision of the ones that we currently, that we received. And again, sort of applaud the staff for putting together, I think, a template that is responsive for what we need, both to assess, for the board to assess it without going through all the data, but also, I think, respects the work that our service providers have done. So it's, there was, I don't know, maybe, let's see...
There were nine contracts that were not transportation or facilities related.
Right. The ones that the staff selected. I think they're the, all the ones for, ones that are direct services to students, and this is something that came up in the Secretary of State's audit, and also that for the board, if like we have thousands of contracts, we're going to really rely on staff's judgment, staff's judgment and the recommendations, but the ones that they felt that we could make the biggest difference in terms of a leverage point for our students was to focus on those that are services to students, as if we're going to pick contracts out of all the thousand that we're going to approve or ones that we're not even going to see because they're less than 150,000, that these are the ones to focus on. Again, the template's the right template. I think we just need, with any new process, to have guidance on how we can most effectively review and get the staff's expertise of their judgment of the performance of the contract.
Okay.
This is a very timely conversation as our own internal auditor is just getting an approved audit underway to look exactly at our protocols and processes for contracts like these. Any further discussion on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, student representative Lateral absent. All right. Do we have any board committee or conference reports?
So I have two committee reports. The first is from the Policy and Governance Committee, and we had a meeting, was it last, last week, of the committee, and we brought back a series of changes to the professional conduct between staff and students, policy that has been under development for eight or nine months. We had the benefit of a fresh set of eyes, sets of eyes from the new board members, so I really appreciate you all taking a look at it. We got some great suggestions, things that the old board members had looked at maybe 50 times and missed something. So we think really took advantage of a new, fresh perspective. In addition, we also had a really great discussion with representative from the Portland Association Teachers about things from a teacher's perspective on the latest draft, and I think we are very close to bringing back a new draft for first reading. We have, I think, my sense is one last meeting, but having the opportunity here directly from a classroom teacher and a representative of the teachers really, I think, enriched the, for the board members who were there, really enriched the discussion and gave us a different way to look at it. We had, in some cases, thought we had totally nailed the language on something that they were concerned about, and we hadn't quite got it, and having sort of the back and forth at the meeting and just being able to get real-time feedback on sort of suggested revisions made a huge difference. So I think we're pretty close. So we had two other things on that agenda, but they'll have to move forward because we felt it was a great discussion, and again, we're close to having it done. There's training underway for the new school year, and we'll be set up, I think, really well heading into the fall, having a really robust policy that has had the input of parents, teachers, staff, administrators, so...
Have you had a chance to talk to PTA representatives as part of the sort of community engagement piece?
Well, I would say that we have a PTA rep at every, every committee meeting. He's almost ex officio now. And so it goes back, and Liz, I may, sorry, Ms. Large, go back to, we, earlier in the process, we, this is our probably fourth first reading? And we did get feedback from parents and, you know, verite...
And answers.
I think we're getting, I think we're getting really, really close. And again, I really appreciate the work that you and Director Constance did on the whole piece about volunteers because, you know, this school system runs with lots of volunteers providing helping support to our classroom teachers, and so that was a key piece, so thanks to the two of you. So I think we're pretty close. So that's the Policy and Governance Committee, and then the Audit Committee met this week, and we had a number of agenda items. We planned out this year's work and shifting to hopefully a quarterly meeting, and sort of our two, the two focuses of the, the work of the, of the committee this year will really be the auditing that's underway for the 2019-20, and also the development of receiving the 2021 draft audit plan from the auditors that would then advance to the board. And in addition, I think the other piece of work is just monitoring and supporting the standing up of the audit function because it's been several years since we've had a functioning audit capacity here, and this will allow us to, there'll just be pieces that are different about having an audit committee that we'll need to do to support them this first year. For example, one of the agenda items is, we had a review of the committee charter, and that's going to come to the full board for review so that the full board will see what the, well, the committee's charter is and the independent auditor's charter. In addition, we had a brief update about the hiring of our second auditor, and it's hopefully imminent, and this is for the senior, the senior performance auditor, and we think will have a great complement to our existing auditor, Mary Catherine Moore. So that's in the works. And then the last piece is our current internal auditor brought to us the sort of work plan for the first, the first audit, which is around contracts, and she spent considerable time sort of creating sort of the template and her testing, okay, I'm going to use the wrong sample, the wrong verbiage here, but bringing all the items that she's going to test for in our current contracting process. And this would give us some early insights on the improvements that are currently underway in our auditing process. And again, I think the spirit in which she's approached it, she's meeting with the contracting staff and has had conversations with the Secretary of State's auditor so that we make sure that we capture any concerns they had. So I'll, I think we'll, so I think we're launched, and she will come back to the full board when she has some preliminary findings. So that's the report from the Audit Committee. I don't know if either of the other two members want to add anything?
We're good. And everyone else I know is chomping at the bit to get, finish our discussion about committees and who will be serving on what committees and what committees we're going to have moving forward. So we'll have that conversation next week, or, excuse me, at our next meeting. And I also would like to have someone report back on our board's experience with the School Board Governance Institute at Harvard. So Director Lowery, can I ask you to do that at our next meeting?
You made eye contact.
Appreciate your readiness there.
I would be happy to.
Okay, that would be great.
I'll ring the chopper.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Next meeting of the Board of Education will be held August 26. Guess it is not the Harvard...